Good afternoon, buenas tardes, and welcome to the October 22 Board Business Meeting. Welcome to our board members, MCPs staff, and members of our community who are joining us here today, and those that are watching this meeting via livestream. Now let us begin the meeting by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I will call the roll to recognize board members to establish that we have a quorum. Mr. Savarna.
Neil Savarna, student member of the board.
Good afternoon, Shepard Evans, District 4.
Good afternoon, Rebecca Smondrowski, District 2.
Good afternoon, Brenda Wolf, District 5.
Good afternoon, Vanessa Tades, Gerais Rivera, Open, District 1.
Good afternoon, Julie Yang, District 3.
And I'm Carla Silvestre, President of the Board. Now we can begin the meeting with the approval of the revised agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
So Ms. Silvestre will need to amend.
I was gonna say.
Initial amendment to the agenda on the calendar and mathematics item.
Okay, so we need a motion to amend the agenda to move item seven, which is the 2025-26 school year calendar presentation up in the order to follow the consent items.
Move, so moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that's unanimous with those present.
I now move the agenda as revised.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that is unanimous with those present. We are now moving on to agenda item number three, which is our recognitions. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the recognition of Native American Heritage Month and Native American Heritage Day, and I have the following resolution for the board's consideration. Whereas the Montgomery County Board of Education recognizes that Montgomery County Public Schools is located on the ancestral land of the Pescataway, Manahoke, and Nogo-Shetank people, and whereas President George H.W. Bush signed into law in 1990 establishing each November as National Native American Heritage Month, and whereas President Barack Obama signed into law in 2009 designating that Friday following the Thanksgiving holiday of each year as Native American Heritage Day, and whereas National Native American Heritage Month is a time for students, staff, and families to consider and recognize Native American history, culture, and contributions to the development of the United States, and whereas Maryland recognizes three Native American tribes today, including Pescataway Indian Nation, the Pescataway Canoe Tribe, and the Anahanuk Indian Tribe, and whereas the 2020 census data indicates that 128,650 people have been identified and have identified themselves as Native American or a part of Native American in the state of Maryland, of which 1,377 live in Montgomery County, and whereas Native American political structure has contributed to the design of the United States government, such as the Iroquois Confederacy's government structure of a multi-state government in which states maintain their own governance, and whereas inventions created by Native Americans have greatly shaped American culture, such as snowshoes, syringes, baby bottles, lacrosse, parkas, and corn, and whereas Native American medicinal practices have influenced Western medicine from the past through today, such as the use of salicyn and aspirin and the active ingredient in willow bark Native Americans use to treat aches and pains, which has led to the development of salicylic acid and the active ingredient in multiple over-the-counter dandruff-fighting shampoos and acne treatments, and whereas Montgomery County Public Schools is committed to integrating Native American history and narratives into its curricula that demonstrate their stories of hardship, victory, and perseverance, and whereas Native American culture continues to influence Montgomery County Public Schools through our system-wide practice of circles as a restorative practice, now therefore be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools hereby declare November 2024 to be Native American Heritage Month in Montgomery County Public Schools, and encourage staff, students, and community to honor Native people and their history, and may it further be resolved that Friday, November 29, 2024 be observed as Native American Heritage Day.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that is unanimous. We honor the indigenous people who are the original stewards of this land and acknowledge that we gather here on the unceded homelands of the Pescataway Tribal Nation. This land holds a deep connection and historical significance for many first peoples of this region. We are committed to expanding our understanding of their rich history and important contributions. We will now move on to our next agenda item, which is public comments. Public comments is one of our opportunities to hear the views and receive the advice of community members. Board members will take your comments into consideration, but it is not our practice to take action at this time on issues that are raised. We encourage public input on policy, program, and practices. This is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters, so we encourage everyone to utilize existing avenues of address for complaints. This is a public meeting, and we expect the conduct of all speakers and members of the audience to be within the bounds of proper etiquette. Inappropriate personal remarks, rude retorts, or other such behavior is out of order and will not be tolerated. Those who demonstrate disruptive or disrespectful behavior during public comments may be asked to leave the room. Please check our website for information about upcoming board meetings, hearings, and work sessions, including any changes to our meeting start times. We have four people signed up to provide in-person testimony. Each speaker will receive two minutes for comments. When your name is called, please approach the table, speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Thirty seconds prior to the expiration of a speaker's time, a yellow light will go on accompanied by a beep. A red light and a buzzer signals that your time has expired. Please push the flat button below the microphone to turn it on and begin speaking. Push the same button once more at the sound of the buzzer to turn it off. In addition to our in-person speakers today, we have three people signed up to provide audio and video testimonies. We will play these submissions once the in-person testimonies have concluded. Copies of testimonies can be found on our website and board docs, where they are posted with other materials for this meeting. So if we could get our first four speakers to please come forward. Helena Sampson, Courtney Evans, Elizabeth Chung, and Sterling Hi, please come forward. Helena Sampson, you may begin.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Taylor. My name is Helena Sampson, and I'm a senior at Albert Einstein High School. I'm here to advocate for the continued funding of electric buses in Montgomery County Public Schools and for greater transparency from the Board of Education regarding this initiative. I first want to acknowledge the huge strides MCPs has made to electrify its school bus fleet, contributing to a safer and more sustainable future. MCPs created a contract to begin electrifying its school bus fleet with Highland in 2021, promising to add hundreds of new electric buses over the course of several years. However, ever since then, the electrification process has been muddled with contracting and budgeting issues, none of which have been adequately communicated with the school community and the county residents. The transition to electric buses was promised to have no net increase in the county's budget while phasing out diesel buses. However, mechanical failures, delayed bus shipments, and charging issues have caused the district millions in wasteful spending, pushing the overall costs far beyond initial projections. MCPs has not been transparent as to how the budget deficit was handled, and as a result, this budget shortfall has been impacting our schools in many ways. This year, as an MCPs student, we were unable to have hard copies of the current book we're reading in my IB English literature class. Instead, we had loose paper copies that my English teacher had to print herself in her own home, and due to a paper shortage that we had at our school, which is a resource that should have been provided by the school itself. I request that MCPs be transparent as to what school services are being cut due to the budget deficit, and seek ways in which to ensure budget neutrality remain as we electrify our school bus fleet. MCPs must review its contract with Highland and hold them accountable to the terms present within the contract to ensure this occurs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Courtney Evans, you may begin.
Good afternoon. As you mean to discuss the new strategic plan and budget, I'm here to call your attention to a growing issue that impacts our staff and students. We don't like to talk about it, but it's not going away, and it's an issue that requires attention as a matter of health, safety, equity, absenteeism, and performance. I'm talking about long COVID. Since the start of the pandemic, many have claimed that COVID poses minimal risk to children. However, the presumption ignores the accumulating threat of long COVID, which can affect anyone regardless of age, health, or vaccination status. My daughter was two when she first experienced symptoms. In fact, nearly 6 million children in the U.S. are already affected, outpacing common conditions like asthma. With no cure or treatment and the risk of severe long COVID increasing with repeat infections, there's a clear need to recognize the impact it has on our schools and take common sense action. Studies published in leading journals such as JAMA show that 10% to 20% of children who contract COVID experience long-term symptoms such as memory issues, body pain, cognitive deficits, and fatigue. These symptoms impact students' ability to focus, learn, and fully participate in school. This is not just a concern for those with pre-existing conditions. Long COVID can impact anyone, no matter how healthy or active they were before infection. I applaud the board for investing in CO2 monitors to help track air quality in schools, but we need to do more. The CDC recommends keeping CO2 levels below 800 ppm to minimize the risk of airborne disease transmission. To meet this standard, we must enhance ventilation and filtration in our buildings and train teachers to monitor and adjust levels in their classrooms. Cleaner air boosts cognitive function, reduces absenteeism, and improves overall student performance. Studies show that students in well-ventilated classrooms perform better academically, are more focused, and have fewer behavioral issues. In addition to improving in-person environments, we must maintain a high-quality virtual learning program. Thank you for recognizing this as a legislative priority and for your commitment to creating safer, healthier school environments. By improving air quality and restoring comprehensive virtual learning options, we foster the success and well-being of all students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Chung, you may begin.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the board, stakeholders. I currently teach in the Learning for Independence Program in one of our local high schools. And for anybody who is unaware, that is a program for students who have intellectual disabilities and unique learning needs. Our students are not diploma-bound. They are on an alternate learning, or ALO, track where they will receive a certificate when they exit at 21. I know that I have a short amount of time, but I would like to begin with a couple of questions for the board. How many of you have been in the classroom in the last 15 years to teach? Five? All right. Things have changed. I'll lie. How many of you have had experience with special education? Yeah, this is important to know. How many of you have been responsible for creating and maintaining an IEP, Individualized Education Plan, which is a legally binding document that provides guidance and support services for our students with disabilities? Thank you. I ask, and I mean this with all due respect, because it certainly for us in schools does not feel like any of you have. At present, it's just very difficult for us. I'm a graduate from, oh my God, already, I'm a graduate from MCPs, and I have been with the county for over 20 years. We have had severe cuts in funding and in staffing, which impact all students. The cuts in our funding for our ALO programs means that we are not meeting the needs of our students when it comes to community-based instruction. Cuts in staffing mean that we are not meeting student needs within the classroom and the school building, not just teachers and support staff, but security as well. Our security, sorry.
Thank you. We have your testimony. Sterling Hi, you may begin.
Good afternoon, members of the board and Dr. Taylor. As MCPs advances through Phase 2 of its strategic plan development, equity, inclusion, and student achievement remain at the forefront. One of the most effective tools for achieving these goals has been virtual access to education, as demonstrated by the success of the Montgomery Virtual Academy. The MVA was a model of how virtual schooling can provide equitable access to a full education. It serves students who, for a variety of reasons, could not thrive in a traditional in-person setting. Whether due to health concerns, learning needs, or family circumstances, virtual education gave these students the flexibility to succeed without the barriers that they faced in physical environments. But the value of virtual schooling goes beyond mere access. MVA students benefited from high-quality instruction tailored to their needs. Virtual education allowed for innovative teaching methods and engaged students and parents in ways that traditional classrooms cannot. For many, the virtual environment provided the safe, focused, and distraction-free environment that they needed to truly excel. This kind of flexibility is essential to closing opportunity gaps and ensuring that all students, regardless of their circumstances, have a clear path to achievement. Moreover, virtual schooling addresses broader challenges within the district by providing efficient access to advanced courses, specialized programs, and other opportunities that might not be available in every school. This is not only supports the individual student achievement, but also helps achieve MCPs' broader strategic goals by expanding the reach of educational resources and leveling the playing field for disadvantaged communities. As MCPs continues Phase 2 of its strategic plan development, the inclusion of a fully comprehensive virtual school should be a priority, as it has been shown to remove barriers to education for hundreds of students within this county alone. Virtual schooling is a vital tool in the MCPs toolbox that ensures equitable access and drives student achievement. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to working with you on this effort moving forward.
Thank you all for your testimony. We will now move on to our audio and video testimony. We received two audio and one video. The first submission comes from Bezawit Gesessesi. Please play the video.
Hello, board. My name is Bezawit Gesessesi, and I'm a senior at Montgomery Blair High School. I'm here on behalf of Moco's Green New Deal BIPOC internship discussing the importance of Montgomery County's initiative to transition to electric buses for the future of our county and community. While it is important to acknowledge the challenges faced during the transition, we should also recognize the benefits these buses will bring to our students and the environment. As an MCPs student, I've personally seen the impacts of transportation on myself and the community. I remember waiting for the bus every morning and being forced to breathe in the fumes of the diesel engines. I still have a diesel bus after school, and I shudder whenever I near the end because of how much the engine overpowers the air around me. It's an inconvenience, but also a frustrating experience, since I just have to deal with it every day. Electric buses are essential for cleaner air and healthier environments in our county. If you reduce reliance on diesel fuel, we can decrease greenhouse gas emissions and harmful pollutants. This aligns with GND's commitment to environmental justice, ensuring that all students can learn and grow in a safe atmosphere. Furthermore, the financial benefits of electric buses shouldn't be overlooked. The long-term savings on fuel and maintenance are projected to be substantial. According to NIH, replacing the U.S. fleet with electric buses could yield around $84,200 in total benefits. Investing in electric buses lets us redirect savings towards educational resources and programs that could directly benefit our students. We could do so much with that increase in budget, more technology in classrooms, better extracurricular programs, and enhanced support for teachers and staff. While we need to address the logistical challenges related to infrastructure contracts and staffing, which have caused setbacks, we need to push for transparency and action to overcome these obstacles. The commitment to electric buses must remain unwavering, and accountability will ensure we stay on track to realize their full potential. The county's partnership with Highland Electric Fleets will ensure a successful transition. We have the opportunity to set an example for other districts by showing that the county's commitment to sustainability is achievable through student voice and advocacy. In conclusion, the benefits of our students and community far outweigh the potential challenges and setbacks.
Our second and last audio testimony comes from Oscar Porras. Please play the audio.
Good afternoon, Board of Education members. My name is Oscar Porras. I'm a junior at Paint Branch High School, and I reside in the 5th District. Today, I am testifying on behalf of the Green New Deal Internship. As a student of Montgomery County Public Schools, I have relied on the school buses to take me to school for my whole life. For a long time, I haven't realized that the school buses that I've been taking to school have been negatively impacting me without me even realizing it. They have been impacting my cognitive abilities and have increased my chances of getting cancer and bronchitis. Since the Climate Solutions Act has been passed, I have felt safer, but seeing how this promise has not been kept is making me angry and disappointed. We, the future, depend on you for a safer school environment and safe and unpolluted air. I am urging you to do better in transitioning diesel buses to electric buses. This switch could greatly impact my life and the lives of future generations. We deserve to get to school without worrying about harmful fumes. Once again, I'm calling on you to reshape our future to something greener. Thank you so much for hearing my testimony, and I hope that my story could contribute to something that could change the lives of others, starting with Montgomery County Public School students. Once again, thank you for your time, and thank you for listening to my testimony. Best regards, Oscar Porras.
Thank you. Our last video testimony comes from Liliana Emefanu-Takor. Please play the video.
Hello. My name is Liliana Emefanu-Takor, and I attend school at Winston Churchill High School in Montgomery County, and I am testifying for the lack of electric buses. As I have just stated, I'm a high school student, a sophomore in fact, not even 16 years old yet, and I am speaking here today to request the expansion of the use of environmentally-friendly buses, because I myself have used these gas buses. I've heard the loud, irritating, unbearable noises it makes at the end of a long day at school when I'm fed up and tired. I have been attacked by the gust of gas that comes from the internal combustion engine on a hot sunny day, and I have gagged on the smell of gas that rushes my senses as I board it. We need electric buses to better this community. The gases emitted from the gas-driven vehicles are proven to release harmful pollutants into the atmosphere, and in turn affecting our planet and our health, according to the Department of Ecology. According to the CDC Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, when a substantial amount of gas is inhaled or exposed to someone, the serious nervous system effects include coma and the inability to breathe, while less serious effects include dizziness and headaches. Further supporting the idea of stopping the use of gas buses and instead investing in more electric school buses to prevent me and other students who are susceptible to dangerous diseases have our health affected. In addition, students who are involved in the special education program are greatly benefited by the use of electric buses. According to the Electric School Bus Initiative, this is due to the fact that electric buses do not contain an internal combustion engine. This decreases the vibration of the bus and the noise made, therefore providing a quieter, more comfortable ride for all students, especially the students who are in the special education program who have more stimulation sensitivities. Improve our lives, preserve our health, and ensure our comfort. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will consider my proposal.
Thank you. This will conclude our public comments. The next business meeting of the Board of Education for public comment is Thursday, November 7. Signups for public comment will open on Thursday, October 31 at 6:00 p.m. In addition to the online signups for public comment, we allow for in-person same-day signups when space allows. Unallocated slots may be filled on a first-come, first-coming. Unallocated slots may be filled on a first-come-first-served basis on the day of the meeting. In order to sign up for in-person, please arrive 15 to 20 minutes before the start of the open session and sign the form. In-person signups will close 15 minutes before public comment begins or when all slots are filled. I will now turn to my colleagues to see if there are any comments before we continue with the meeting. Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the students who testified today about our electrification of our bus fleet, and just wanted to reassure that MCPS is committed to transforming our fleet to a greener, cleaner, healthier, more environmentally friendly one. We are committed to maintaining a professional relationship with our current contractor for the life of that relationship, and also have done an RFI where we're looking to better assess what the current landscape is for fleet electrification, as that is technology that is rapidly developing. And our, the last time we took a seriously objective look at the technology was five years ago. And so, once we have fully assessed the RFI, the Request for Information, to get a sense of what the capacity is out there, how the technology has evolved, then it is our hope to move forward with another RFP. So, just wanted to reassure everybody out there, we have not abandoned the electrification of our fleet.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights on? Oh, Ms. Revadovin.
I just would like to see if somebody can follow up from staff with Mrs. Chung. She, oh, sorry. Okay. Yeah, it just sounded that that would be a good thing to do. And thank you again to the students. That's all.
Mr. Svarna.
I did want to say thank you for, to all the students who come out and who came out and testified either virtually or in person. You know, it means a lot when students come to the table and express their opinions. So, did just want to say that again.
Okay. Dr. Thomas, you have some comments for us on our boundary study RFP.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of things to share. In your upcoming consent agenda, we typically don't talk about the things that are not in there, but this board made a commitment to sharing information about our boundary study, and we want to honor that commitment and, and share some information that we have about our boundary study RFP. We also received some great public comment at the board's last meeting, and we've taken that public comment into consideration at the board's direction. So, on September 9 of 2024, MCPS issued a request for proposal for a consultant to conduct a school boundary review for Montgomery County as bid RFP number 4998.1. This RFP was originally scheduled to close on October 9 of this month, 2024. We recently extended this bid response period to allow for more opportunity for respondents to submit proposals. This bid number, 4998.1, is now scheduled to close on October 31, 2024, and our target date for the board's consideration to award this contract is November 21, 2024. So, this is an update. We're extending the bid period to allow for more consideration, and, and this is definitely in, in response to us being transparent with the community and sharing more information about this process. And, Madam President, I do have something else to talk about, if that's all right.
Yes.
So, last time that the board met during your consent agenda, there was an item that was pulled, and it was critical to the supervision of the school system. Our student member of the board wanted to make sure that the quality of the cookies being served in the school system was just that, high quality for our students. I'd like to introduce you to Chef Rob and the operations team. Chef Rob Weinstein is the new executive chef for Montgomery County Public Schools, and he has something to ensure quality is being shared with our students. These are cookies from our nutrition services program. So, DFNS, thank you so much for preparing these cookies for the board's review. It is absolutely critical that your oversight and quality control take place, and as student member of the board, we'd like to thank you for initiating this quality review process.
Mr. Svarna.
I wanted to say thank you guys so much for the demonstration, a very delicious one. I'm not going to lie, I had, I had a sneak peek or a sneak bite, as I might say, earlier today, but I will be eating these throughout the board meeting as well. And I did want to tell everyone, these weren't, you know, specially made for us. They were taken directly from a school, so it's the same things that, that you guys will see in your school. So, you know, I made a commitment to, to working with our Department of Food and Nutrition Services to, you know, establishing better school lunches, and so I've been following up with, up on them with that very, very closely. Alongside that, been going with them on school visits and school taste testing events. So, you know, there's a lot of work that's being done in this space, and just want to say thank you again one more time to everyone who's involved in this.
Thank you, Mr. Svarna. Okay, thank you. I appreciate the snacks and keep asking questions about quality of food, and maybe we'll keep having taste tests. We are now moving on to our next agenda item, which is the school year calendar. We amended our agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Actually, consent items first. I'm sorry, yes. The cookies got me confused. Agenda item number seven. Agenda item number seven, I will ask board members if there's any consent items that they would like to pull. Mrs. Mandrowski? Nope.
Oh, move approval of the consent item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hands, and that is unanimous. Thank you. Now, we will move on to the agenda item. As the Chair of the Policy Committee, I hand it over to Mrs. Mandrowski.
Yep, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you guys for being here. At its first, at its meeting on September 17, the Policy Management Committee reviewed two draft calendars, scenarios for the 2025-2026 school year, and we are bringing them forward to the full board for discussion today. The primary difference in these two scenarios relates to the length of the winter break. Also included in the draft scenarios this year is a student transition day to be held the day before the scheduled first day of school. This non-instructional day would be designed to welcome students who are transitioning to a new school, who receive special education services, or who are emergent multilingual learners, and to set them up for success at the start of the school year. In this presentation, we will hear more from administration on the concept of the student transition day, as well as the feedback received to date on the two scenarios and early considerations for the 2026-2027 year calendar. Just to clarify, the board will not be taking action on these scenarios today. They will be put out for public comment in advance of the next Policy Management Committee meeting on November 14, with a target approval date by the full board on December 5. So, those are your, that's your background, and with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Taylor and his administration to walk through all of these considerations.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam President. Before we, we jump right in and detail some of the components of the proposed calendar for the board's consideration, I want to point out that the school calendar development process for the 25-26 school year definitely reflects input from students, staff, families, and community to create the draft calendars for the board's review, which were, which were used to gain some really authentic impressions from, from our community. I will also share that from years of working on district calendars, that there is no perfect calendar that exists or that meets everyone's needs in, in a school year calendar, that this calendar and every school year calendar represents trade-offs to balance instructional time, holidays, and professional service time for planning and for training. All of that said, I am so proud to share this draft calendar that supports the board of education's priorities and also offers some innovation in how we address the needs of our transitioning students. With that, it's my pleasure to introduce our Chief of District Operations, Ms. Edwards, who will share details about the draft 2025-2026 school year calendar.
Thank you, everyone, and good afternoon, close to evening. I'm joined here by Ms. Malchodi, who's the Executive Director in the department, in the office as well. So, as Dr. Taylor and Ms. Mandrowski shared, the school year calendar that we bring to you today, we have two draft scenarios. Both of them have 181 days. As a district, we have been going 182 days. The 181 gives us the flexibility to really pull a real good equity lever with the student transition day. The difference between the two, the eight days, the eight-day winter break has the last day of school on June 27. The 10-day winter break has the last day of school on June 22. And the two calendars that we will look at are aligned with policy IDA and includes thorough cultural responsive engagement with multiple stakeholders. I want to bring to your attention the timeline. Today, we are at the space where the board in total is having a first review and discussion of our draft calendars. Leaving out of today's discussion, there will be an opportunity for public comment, returning for a second discussion at Policy Management, and then finally, in December, the full adoption by the board of the 25-26 calendar. Ms. Malchodi will share some information with you regarding some of the feedback we've gathered.
That's my favorite part. So, we were able to use the initial feedback that we gathered last year, when we were sort of ending our development for the 24-25 calendar, as well as think about our educational interests, our operational needs, to really put forth these two drafts earlier than we were able to do last year. We listened, and we took the feedback that we got, and we incorporated it into those drafts to get feedback. This survey is just one part of the feedback that we gather. It is important for us to also reach out through our focus groups, as well as with our committees, in order to get genuine feedback from our stakeholders, from their perspectives. We are so grateful to everyone who has and continues to champion these efforts, including our associations, our MCCPTA friends, community school liaisons, parent community coordinators, students, staff, community members, I could go on and on. But this has been such a great effort, and we just really want to take a moment to acknowledge all of those who have supported us through this. One addition to the survey this year is geographical location of the respondent. And what we did was we included this so that we could pinpoint focus groups where the data is not as well represented, represented as in other areas. And so, that's been really helpful for us to say, you know, we're getting some good data here, but where do we still need to reach out? As you can see from these initial results, you know, there's a definite sense that people prefer the calendar with the 10-day winter break at first glance. We will talk about the draft calendars coming up, but this is sort of where we are as of when we submitted the slides for this. Next slide, please.
Let's talk a little bit about student transition day and this, like.
Microphone.
That would be important. I'll talk a little bit about student transition day, which goes in along with the feedback. Earlier, I talked about it being a huge equity lever, and one of the things Dr. Taylor has been very focused on is how do we foster more significant equity opportunities? Currently and over the years, we've had a orientation day, the Thursday, a pre-service. What we know is not all children have been able to attend, because we've had families on vacation. Families may not have been ready, they may not have been registered, and so it doesn't create an opportunity for the students that we need to engage on those days to engage. So, in conversations about the calendar, Dr. Taylor said, let's look at a student transition day, a day for our kindergartners, our third graders, sixth graders, ninth graders, anyone new to a school, special education students, and our emergent multilingual learners across the district, to be able to come to their new school and have an opportunity to get comfortable, to learn where they are, and to really build a sense of belonging. And we have heard from our students, as well as our families, that that sense of belonging is really important, and being able to do it on a day throughout the district would really, really be important. So, if you notice on your calendar, August 25, which would have been typically our first kind of opening of school, will be that opening for students who would be new to their buildings.
We have spent quite a bit of time and continue.
No, your light on.
We have spent quite a bit of time and continue to do so, working with student focus groups to gather their input and feedback on what a student transition day would look like, feel like, sound like for them. With that, we have also been working with our student member of the board and our student government leaders, because the experiences that they have really can help us shape these experiences. And one of the things that we have really seen is that there are some amazing things going on in different schools, and this is going to allow us to put all of those together and really give this experience to all students. We're very excited. Some of the key themes we've heard from the students so far are that this will decrease anxiety for them, this will allow them to meet their new teachers, get a sense of the building and the campus layout, and provide opportunities for them to learn about programs, activities, clubs, so that they can feel connected to students and trusted adults. You can see on the right side of the slide, there's a sample. We started kind of collecting some of the information that was shared to give a sense of what this day could look like. We never intended it to be a full day of school, full classes. We wanted students to really have some special opportunities to begin that sense of belonging, sense of community, that we want and need for our students to be successful. We are so excited and so thankful to all the schools that have reached out or have allowed us to come and get that feedback. We continue to get it, and even as, most recent as yesterday, I was at BCC with the Barrens, listening to their feedback and their perspectives. Next slide, please.
With every new opportunity, as we gather the feedback, we need to be honest about the things that we need to work out. This is a great chance for children to really get attached to new buildings, to see themselves as a part of community, but there have been some pieces that we just need to be attentive to throughout this process, and you see some of those. And those are pieces that, as we kind of build out and prepare, we'll be building this out collectively with others. Families want to be included with this process. This really gives the condition for success. And then there's also an opportunity of thinking about what are the balance of school staff responsibilities, and those are conversations in which leadership teams can look in terms of how they build out. As we transition, we wanted to really, as we transition, as we transition away from the transition day, we wanted to be able to just give you a bird's eye view in terms of what it really means, and what it really means for a student, and really trying to bring this program to light in Montgomery County. And so, we'll move now on to our draft calendar scenarios for the board to be considerate of.
And one of the things that. One of the things that we always do as well is benchmark with our neighboring districts to see where we fall in terms of some of those big rocks, like start date, end date, winter break, spring break. And you can see some of our neighboring districts here, as well as the note that Prince George's County adopts their calendar in February of 2025, so we are actually in planning phases with them, because they are in a similar space to, to us in that process. Next slide, please. Okay, so, this is the draft calendar that has the eight-day winter break. You can see the student transition day, as Ms. Edwards shared, is Monday, August 25, and the first day of school for all students will be Tuesday, August 26. The spring break for both of the draft calendars you're going to see is the same, and the last day of instruction for students will be Wednesday, June 17, 2026. Both calendar drafts that you will see were built as instructionally sound calendars with consistent periods of sustained instruction, and you can see that by all the green for that. Both calendars also reflect the board's continued interest in recognizing the diversity of our county with professional days and non-instructional days. Next slide, please. Here is the second draft calendar that has the 10-day winter break. The student transition day and the first day of school are the same. The Student Transition Day and the first day of school are the same for both calendars, as well as spring break. The winter break for this calendar, as you can see, includes the 22nd and 23rd of December. And the last day of school for students is Monday, June 22nd. One of the things that we really feel is important as we look at the calendar is not only to consider the instructional needs, but also operational. And so as we think about our employees, particularly our support staff, one of the things that we value and consider is their pay periods, and times where they may have no work, no pay days because of extended days off of school, whether that's winter break, spring break, or days throughout the year. And so that's something we work very hard to analyze as we go through this process.
I want to go back one slide. One thing, just to highlight here, is while the 10-day winter break was popular within the survey, in the focus groups, what started to come out was that there would be an adverse impact, as Ms. Malchody alluded to, to some of our 10-month SEIU employees who would not have, who would have a longer period of time over the winter break where they would not have work and pay. And so that would equate to approximately a check with five days of pay. And so one of the things we've worked really hard over the past couple of years with our calendar is to really look at how we really get to the point where they have almost a full check moving throughout the school year. So I did want to highlight that the data is showing us that the 10-day calendar is the strongest one that people like, of course, I like it as well, but then people, the consideration around our equity questions of who is this for and who does this impact, one of the impacts that did come out very loudly was just around the consideration around our employees within that area. During our last conversation around the calendar, it was an interest to look at bringing forward a 26-27 calendar as well. We have started to gather some input and talk about the 26-27 calendar. However, we wanted you to just know where we were in terms of what are the feedback was sharing with us. However, at this point, there's some complexities within this calendar. We'd like to take some time, and we've discussed this, you know, in terms of when would we bring forward a draft. And so now the focus, we're focusing on the 25-26 calendar, but wanted to let you know that the feedback that we're seeing is, one week before Labor Day is of interest, but we need to kind of delve a little bit deeper into how some of the days are falling within that particular year. So we'd like some additional time to be able to bring some more information back to the Board around that. Our next steps, we will continue to do engagement, as we talked about earlier, leading up to the next Policy Management Committee, looking at considerations for the 26 and the 27 calendar. The Board adoption of the calendar is at the December Board Meeting, and so we plan to use this runway to really continue to gain some feedback around what we're hearing to be able to inform the recommendation that will come forward. And so the two scenarios you see are very similar, but the difference would be, one does include an eight-day winter break, and one does include a 10-day winter break. Both do have 181 instructional days, and we have included a Transition Day for our students who are going to new locations in a key transition points within their educational career, really trying to pull an equity lever to be able to provide a level of sameness for experiences, a sense of community, and both calendar scenarios do include the Board policy of IDA, as well as the conditions from the state. And we'll turn it over to questions.
Thank you. Could you restate the next steps for the public?
Sure. The next steps, the next steps, we will continue engagement around the calendar options. We will do focus groups, we will do many of our engagements through kind of direct conversations. If there's a need based on our conversation today, we may put out another survey, but that direct conversation will continue to happen around what works in the calendar, where there are advantages and disadvantages. And then in December, the Board will have their final vote for adoption.
But if I want to look at the options and give you comments just online, is there an opportunity to do that?
Yes, we do have a, the survey is still open. There is, when you go to the MCCPS website, there's a ghost, a floating ghost, where people can click directly on. We will include it in the Things to Know, and our principals have been great sending it out through their connect messages as well.
Great, thank you. I will ask my Board members to turn their lights on, I'll start on this side, Mr. Savanna.
I just wanted to say thank you again for all the communication that's been occurring with students and these student groups. I know I've been, I know you guys have come out to my Smolten Pfizer Council meeting, you've come out to the MCRSGA meetings, the MCJC meetings, and you have been out in schools as well, and I know that means a lot to students. I know I've put out my polls on my Instagram as well with, you know, and students have been saying back like 99%, like, "I want the 10-day winter break." And I did want to say, say one thing about the winter break, too, is I think a lot of students really appreciate it for the fact of, you know, when you have the 22nd and 23rd off, it almost feels like you're getting four extra days because of the weekend before, so just did want to say that. But that's, I'll leave that as my comments for now, but thank you again.
Mrs. Evans?
Sure. We had a really great discussion at the Policy Committee, and I like the idea of the Transition Day, and as we think about particularly trying to make certain that all of our students are engaged, I think it's really important that our incoming freshmen have an opportunity to not feel overwhelmed and get a good feel for their school, because that could have a direct impact on engagement at their school. So we want our students to want to come to school every day, and that could also tie to absenteeism possibly. So my question is this, I'm looking at the geographical locations, and I just see like in Aspen Hill and Wheaton and other areas, Kensington and only where the percentages are low. Do we have a QR code? I'm not trying to create more work for you all, I know the superintendent's having a town hall, and it will be at Wheaton High School. As an opportunity, I don't know who's going to be there, but people can know that there's a QR code, there's a survey to fill out. I just want us to, at every possible moment, to engage our community that we can do that. So that was one of my questions, because we don't have, I mean, we have a higher percentage in some parts of the county. I just wanted to make sure that everybody gets this information. I don't want it to be that we have unintended consequences for families, and they look up and they weren't aware, because they didn't hear, they didn't see, because not everybody engages in the same way. So that was my question. Thanks.
Mrs. Evans, we tried the ge, this was our first time out really doing the geographical location within the county, and it's for that reason. So when we look at the data, we'll say, "Oh, my goodness, look who's responding, we need more from here." That pinpoints the focus groups to have the direct conversations. And so we'll send the QR code with the superintendent so that he can travel with it and have people scan it.
Yes.
Why not? Two-for-one while you're there, calendar and superintendent, right? It's a great opportunity.
I just also wanted to share, too, that was one of the things we noticed right away, and so we've been reaching out to some of our calendar helpers and saying, "Help." And so last week, I got a call at the last minute that said, "If you can get me paper copies," because there are families who are uncomfortable with online surveys, they don't want to give their information away. I said, "What languages do you need? Do you need them in color? How many copies?" And while I was at a different event presenting on the calendar, the MCCPTA Cluster President for the Wheaton Cluster took the paper copies and my QR code to that, to the Hispanic Heritage event that they were having for that reason. And so we try to be flexible in understanding and say, "Oh, that makes a lot of sense." You know, so we immediately have been trying to make those adjustments to make sure that we get more students, more families, more participation.
Okay, very good. And so I do like that addition to the geographical locations, and not to make the assumption that everybody only does electronic, the paper is perfect. And I do know, because everybody wants to see the superintendent, that wherever he goes, if the information follows him, we're likely to get more responded, so thanks.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah, thank you. And I was just going to ask, you know, building on Ms. Evans' comments, reaching out to our trusted partners in the community, where sometimes MCCPS isn't the first place they go for information, so it sounds like you're doing that, which I appreciate. One observation, and that is, as I look at Option 2, with the longer spring, the longer winter break, looking at the end day, operational considerations. So, if we end school on Monday, June 22nd, and the prior Friday, school is closed for Juneteenth celebration, how many people do we actually think are going to show up at school on Monday, June 22nd? So, just as an operational consideration, I mean, I would, I would concern, I would bet money, at least half of the people won't be there, so just putting that out there. And so, and just another comment I heard from a couple of parents in the community that had taken your survey, and they were talking about the Transitional Day, which I, too, I think it's, I think it's really quite brilliant, but they had, they were, they were saying that concerns that they were sort of hearing were families with multiple children in the system, and only one would be in one of these groups, and so what, you know, if they, that would be an additional thing that they would have to plan for, is what those other children would be doing on that day, and I didn't know if we would be looking at partnering with, with our out-of-school-time folks for, you know, or Big Student Service Learning Day for the older kids or something, just to take it, to acknowledge the fact that for some families, this, this will be something that requires, is not simple and straightforward. And then, and the other question I have, question, comment, talking, having a conversation with a parent in the Watkins Milk Cluster, who had also been, she had three kids in the system, all in different schools, and she had taken the survey, and she, her comment to me was, "Why do we start school so late?" And her observation was, there are lots of schools, well, there are lots of school systems in the country that start later than we do, because they always are going to start after Labor Day, but there are others that are starting, you know, as early as the first week of August. Her observation was, if students are in AP courses, the AP exam is a nationally scheduled day, and she was wondering, do the school systems who begin significantly sooner than MCCPS, do those students have an advantage because they have more instructional time in their EP courses? I don't know the answer. I sort of, in my mind, was thinking, it probably kind of comes out in the wash, because most of those school systems that start significantly early take breaks that we don't. They take a fall break, they, they may take a winter break in addition to a spring break. So it may be that really over time, the, the number of instructional days before that nationally established AP exam day are about the same, but I think it is something that some of our families are wondering about and concerned about, that we might want to quantify for them a little bit more, and it looks like it's a bigger issue. I appreciate the two-year look ahead, but when you're looking at in 26-27, and the late Labor Day, which would mean not starting school until August 31st, that would, that would be for families that look at it through this lens, and a month of school time that students in other jurisdictions across the country have that our students wouldn't have. So I'm just putting that comment forward, because I will be honest with you, I had never thought of that before, ever, and I, I had never thought of that before, so.
Ms. Wolf?
I think Ms. Harris has covered a number of the comments I had. I was in the Policy Committee meeting, and I do agree with putting this out for comment, but I am going to be very interested in how many respondents are interested in school closing on a Monday, because like Ms. Harris, I don't believe that anyone is going to come if it closes on a Monday. And in regard to her comment about partners, I was going to suggest that, you know, we do have a number of partners that put out weekly communications, such as the Regional Service Centers. You might get them to put an ad and they, you know, put the announcement in their distribution, but it also, if you notice, our county, our county council puts out a newsletter. It might be good for them to say, "Hey, did you know MCCPS is working on the calendars? Submit comments." So I think there's plenty of opportunity to find partners that have regular distribution and distribution with the community that we may not have, particularly the Mid-County Regional Service Center, which covers Aspen Hill and Wheaton, and the East County one, which covers, you know, along the 29 corridor, as well as White Oak. Thank you.
Mr. Veda Avan?
Yes, thank you. I just want to say, last year, we brought the whole geographic issue to you guys, and you guys listened, and I just want to say thank you for doing that, because it does give us a better lens of, of who the folks are that are not really getting the message or participating, and like my colleague, Mrs. Evans, said, "We'd really want people to, to know," you know, not to find that when it's too late. So, two things I have a question on. So, for, for 2026, you have the option of the winter break, December 23rd through January 2nd, but I don't see that option, because I heard, I heard your explanation about the 10-day break is the most popular, obviously, by far, by, by the community, right? And by the students, but, but I don't understand then, why is it that we don't have the eight-day option in that, in that calendar year? Because if you, am I, am I reading it wrong? Like, when you go to Attachment B, and you see the school year for 2026, it says the eight-day winter break, Wednesday, December 23rd through January 1st? I don't see that option for 2025 into 2026.
For 2026 or 2027?
Yes, so, there is, the one that you're recommending, I think, or at least, is, the 10-day is out, right, is the winter break to start 20, December 24th, Christmas Eve, correct? But on the school year for 2026, it starts December 23rd.
So what is your question?
So my question is, could that be an option for the previous school year, starting the winter break on the 23rd instead of on Christmas Eve?
So for us to take a look at that, I understand.
Sorry, it took a while.
No, 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 I have it.
Sorry, I got everybody confused.
So it is an option that we can go back and socialize, you know, like I said, we're in the space of being able to gather feedback. I'm hearing, what is the middle ground, and what's the impact?
And the only reason I say that is because like Ms. Harris, I had a lot of parents, you know, who took your survey, but they did not see that option for, and they were trying to figure out, you know, why wasn't it an option now, later than, than later? Because that might be a nice compromise for, for the one that we're not going to be able to do. And when it comes to the, the geographic participation, I, I'm very disappointed, as the Up County Representative, that it was such a low participation in the Germantown and Kluxberg area. So one of the things I would suggest is to also work with our after-school, before and after-school folks who do daycare, like the Bartees of the world, and also linkages to learning, and also our wellness centers, and, and some of the hubs that have direct access, so they, you know, they work a lot with these families, and to have the paper option, because we know that a paper option, it's an equity issue, and a lot of people just, you know, don't have an email, or if they have an email, they don't have Wi-Fi, and, or if they have, you know, they have Wi-Fi, they don't have a computer. So, thank you, I appreciate your, your work.
No, thank you, and we will, we will follow up around the additional day that you were speaking of. We do have plans to visit some of our bus stops, like we did in previous years, to be able to talk to families, as well as some of our community schools, when they have the community coming in, just to give us that direct connection, and the hub is, yes.
Ms. Yang?
Yes, thank you so much. I want to make a comment. I noticed that there are no school days sprinkled throughout the calendar, and in the past, I have heard many students or families comment on the structure of our calendar. The structure of our calendar has impact- The structure of our calendar has impact on the student, teachers' well-being. They appreciate having some breaks in between to, to break up. But at the same time, there is continuities of instruction. So I appreciate it. I noticed that on the calendar, so I appreciate that. In terms of community engagement, I really do like this geographic breakdown. And one of the things I have been thinking about is, especially in the Up County area, so sometimes maybe we don't just engage with, go to the traditional folks that we are engaged with. And one of the things I noticed in the Up County area, there are many housing developments, that's new family, they are forming their, their neighborhood HOAs. And they have annual meetings that draw large crowds. And actually, last week, there was a new one forming. On the Wednesday night was packed clubhouse, and it was very, a lot of young families that, that, that use our schools. So I'm wondering, maybe there are some ways we can find some of those community partners that we don't usually partner with. Thank you so much. Terlena Strop.
Ms. Madraski, did you have a comment?
Yes. So I just want to start off by saying thank you very much for all of this. You did a great job at presenting it to us at Policy Management Committee, and listening to our feedback, I appreciate it very much. I was talking to a stu, two students yesterday, over at Quince Richard, who were new to the school this year. And they were saying how they had the transition day, the Friday before school started, and they thought that that was very helpful, and they appreciated the opportunity to do that. So I will renew my question about that, because as Ms. Harris mentioned, and as we discussed at the Policy Management Committee, I don't think anybody's going to show, I mean, I think the attendance rate will be very, 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 very low on the last day of school, especially since it's a half-day, and it's on a Monday. And if there's any way that we can look at somehow addressing that, I just, I, I do think, for our attendance issues and whatever, I think that, that would benefit us. But beyond that, I just, I know that there are concerns with the paychecks aspects of things. And I, I do want to say thank you very much, both to our union partners, as well as our administration, for taking those considerations into concern. I, of course, am a big supporter of the 10-day winter break, but that's because, you know, I think families get to have the opportunity to do some extra things without everybody else necessarily being there. And to Ms. Harris's point, you know, Frederick County, for example, they start a week earlier than we do. Now, they end a week earlier than we do, so it's the same number of days. But in the years past, we've had conversations about considering, starting a week earlier, ending the same time, and adding a few extra days off sprinkled throughout the calendar. So I don't know if that's something that we still ever talk about or consider. It does give students, AP students, the extra opportunity to get a few extra days of education before their national testing. But this is just something that I wanted to throw out there, because I didn't mention it during the Policy Committee. But again, I want to say thank you very much. I want to say thank you to my colleagues for participating in the conversation. And we'll let you, go ahead, and then I'll move it.
I still have some comments.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask also if, in, in future iterations, that we can also include the final date for seniors, which is usually different than the rest of the school system. I think that just could be a little bit thing for seniors to know, hey, like at a countywide level, when, like, will seniors be dropping off, right? And just generally be a little bit helpful.
Quickly, my comments are, I'm very interested in how the longer winter break affects instruction. So I'm glad that you had a lot of staff participating in the survey, but I'd love, when you come back to us, to say, you know, the semester ends at the end of January, and now you're going to have a two-week break in late December. What's the impact on instruction? The APIB thing as well, I think we have heard that in years past, is that the later you start, the less time you have to prepare for that exam. And just, you know, for the scenario that has December 24th as the start of the winter break, remember, some communities, that's the day that they celebrate for the holidays. So that's something to take into consideration. And what are you doing with the innovative school year calendar?
I'm so glad you asked. So we work with them once we build the shells, and they have their own group that meets. And so we've met twice already to take the drafts and start putting in their pieces. So last week, we got to talk about what their student transition day would look like, and what their first day of school would look like, based on the calendars, the drafts that we have. And then Thursday night, the principal has invited me to a community meeting to talk to the community about where we are in the process. So very excited, they're wonderful, we love working with them. It is a parallel process, but this comes first, because that helps us back into what they need to build their summer, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Madraski.
So again, there's no action to be taken, but if everyone is comfortable with it, we will go ahead and have you submit it out to the public for, for public comment. And we look forward to hearing from everybody. I also, you know, in concerns about geographical areas, making sure that we have solid, equitable representation from both parents and students. And I saw we had a huge number of people from outside of Montgomery County who are very concerned about our calendar.
So some of that is teachers?
Okay, okay, all right.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
CEA was very proactive in making sure, one of the things we heard from Policy Management Committee was, what do teachers say? And so they were, they were very helpful in sending that survey out.
But just, wouldn't they count as staff?
They would still identify their geographic location. We, I think we said, where do you live?
Got it.
Because sometimes we have people who share things about our district, who don't live in our district, so.
That's, that's why I was concerned. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Calendar is very much of interest to our community. I think I heard some, at one point, that it was the most clicked-on button on the website. So I know I visit it often when making plans for the family.
Yeah, I think we get the highest per, well, no, participation rate as well, like she gets like 20,000, as opposed to our two, that we normally get, so.
Wonderful. So we're now moving on to our next agenda item, item number six, which is an item for discussion, mathematics, performance, and strategies. We're going to focus today on students with disabilities, emergent multilingual learners, and free and reduced-price meal systems. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. As you may recall, on September 26th, the, the team shared math performance data and the priority areas of focus for mathematics at the elementary and secondary level. Today, we resume that discussion, taking a deep dive into the educational services for emergent multilingual learners, our students with disabilities, and those that qualify for free and reduced meal prices. Meeting the needs of our students receiving services at the district level is crucial for improving our academic success and, and improving equity across the district. Staff will share different strategies we use for our special populations in mathematics, including co-teaching, teaching the language of mathematics, professional learning focused on our students' unique needs. And the presentation today also includes a high-level overview of student math performance as measured by the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program in grades three, six, and Algebra I, with a focus on our students receiving those specified services. We are joined today by members of the team from Tacoma Park Middle School, who will share their focus on co-teaching and the use of data for day-to-day instruction to meet student needs in resulting, in, which is resulting in improved outcomes for students receiving educational services. This time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Peggy Pugh, who will lead today's presentation.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Presidents Avestre, Dr. Taylor, and members of the board. The, the group that you see before you is highlighted by Javier Valera, who is our math content specialist, who we really hope his explanations can, can really bring home to you a clear picture of what we're trying to say we're doing to address our mathematics. We also have with us today Dr. Keisha Logan, who's the Director in Pre-K Curriculum, so this is all residing, this work in her office, Tamara Hewlett, who is our Director of the Department of English Learners and Multilingual Education. She's been here with us before, sharing the strategies in other areas. And then Kelly Jerron, who is the Supervisor for Specially Designed Instruction, which is exactly what it is we're going to be talking about today in mathematics. So, next slide, please. We do believe that to improve math performance for students receiving services, we have to provide professional learning that is designed, focused on meeting our teachers' needs for understanding and planning for the unique needs of these diverse learners. That includes setting very clear expectations and support for our, our district-wide approach, which is co-planning, co-teaching, and then data-driven instruction, so making those adjustments in real time as students show us what they can and cannot do yet. Math is a language-rich content, and it's our job to ensure that teachers understand how much language impacts the student's ability to actually do the math. Language development does take time, but the urgency to get teachers what they need for our students' success is right now. Next slide, please. Our focus today on math progress for students receiving services is in alignment with the board's number-one priority in success in mathematics and literacy. It also aligns with the expectations outlined in the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. It's critical that we get this right now, because our students need to remain on track to meet those high-level benchmarks that are included in the blueprint. We also are committed to this strategic plan, but believe that math and literacy should continue in any strategic plan. So we're happy to bring to you the information for how we plan to do that work. And I'll now turn it over to Javier, our star. Next slide, please.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. So my name is Javier Valera, and I'm the proud math content specialist at Tacoma Park Middle School. I'm also joined by Principal Ellen Martin, who is sitting in the audience. And we are excited to share how our intentional actions to support students receiving services have made an impact on achievement on ENCAP. Okay, so at Tacoma Park Middle School, we use the Illustative Math Curriculum because it provides students with instruction that mirrors the rigor of Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, or ENCAP. For students to be successful, they have to have daily experiences with this level of rigor. And in addition to rigor, at Tacoma Park Middle School, we have been focusing on models of co-teaching. So last year, we took a day to provide professional learning to special and general education teachers about the different co-teaching models. We realized that we were not maximizing the expertise of both adults. And to be effective, our teachers needed learning. From this learning, both teachers are now seen as leaders of instruction. Our strategic instructional approach to supporting students receiving services comes in three ways. Using, number one, using strategies that engage students. Number two, collecting data to, on students' learning. And number three, addressing the data with the students in the following lesson. Teachers are strategically using data from the curriculum daily assessments, called cooldowns, to plan for instruction. Teachers use the information to guide the opening part of the next-day class. During this opening, the students work on the website iXL, or in small group, with one of the co-teachers to address any misunderstandings of the previous day. It is crucial for the learning process that students receive timely feedback, especially for our most diverse learners. So in addition to this, at Tacoma Park Middle School, we use engaging strategies from the curriculum, such as the Math Language Routines, to get students talking about math. The Math Language Routines are the strategies built in the curriculum to foster mathematical understanding, promote language development, provide access to the problems, and support collaborative work. So for example, if I can give you an example of how we have used a Math Language Routine called InfoGAP. In last week's lesson, the students learned how shapes move on a coordinate plane. So imagine this, if I'm a student, I have a problem car with a shape, sorry, I have a problem car with a shape on it, on a coordinate plane, and I will ask for the new location of the shape. So pretend my partner is Superintendent Taylor. And then you have the data with all the information about how the shape is moved, but I cannot see that information. So then I have to ask my partner, for example, I will ask, was the shape reflected over the x-axis or the y-axis? Is this a reflection? Is this a translation? And then Dr. Taylor will always start with, why do you need to know that? And I will say, well, I need to know what transformation, and it, and, and then I will provide, so I will provide a justification, and only then, Dr. Taylor will give me the information. So, and this happens all across the curriculum. This is just an example. These routines forces students to have deep conceptual understanding, to make sense of the problem, create questions to gain more knowledge and information, justify their reasoning, produce academic mathematical language, and collaborate with peers to reason about the problem solving. These skills foster growth in the domains of speaking, listening, and reading, which are essential, essential for our emergent multilingual learners to develop in order to have success in math. They're also beneficial to the needs of many of our special education students. Along with these curriculum strategies, this year at Tacoma Park Middle School, we are using the Building Thinking Classroom framework to increase student engagement, dialogue, and problem-solving skills. So far, in all of our classes, in all of our classes, we have successfully implemented several practices of building thinking classrooms. These three, we have implemented the first three so far, like in all the classes. There are 14 altogether. These three practices consist in giving students problems that we select from the curriculum, making random groups of three, and having the students stand to work on the problems on a whiteboard or any other vertical space, like even windows. To achieve this, we provide the teachers with materials and training sessions. And just this month, we all visited a high school to see the Building Thinking Classroom and Math Language Routines strategies in action. We believe when we invest in our teachers, it leads to change in instruction and student achievement. I mentioned iXL, and at Tacoma Park Middle School, we are thankful for its purchase. We use it daily, and our students use, sorry, I just said that. Our students use iXL daily to work on the skills aligned to the curriculum, work on individual MAPM study plans, and order recommendations created from the iXL Diagnostic Assessment. So far this year, our students have achieved proficiency in more than 10,700 skills, and spend more than 3,341 hours at school or at home, and counting. In closing, students receiving services need teachers to be strategic with every move they make in planning and instruction. Our students need effective co-teaching, instant feedback, engaging lessons, and means to reinforce skills. This plan has not only helped us to increase achieving on our ENCAP, but it has also led to an amazing increase in growth and measurement of academic progress in math, the MAPM assessment. Our goal for the school year 23, 24 was that 50% of African-American and 48% of Hispanic-Latinx students will meet or exceed their projected growth goals on the measurement of academic progress in math assessment. And by the end of the year, we had 76% of, of our African-American students and 71% of our Hispanic-Latinx students met their growth goal. We exceeded our goals by 26% and 23%, respectively. We want to celebrate the successes we made, but we know we still have a lot of work to do, especially in regards to multilingual learners. At Tacoma, we are committed to our students' success, and we believe that looking at data is not enough. So we decided to take action and provide students with what they needed, without reservations and without excuses, because they matter. I am so proud of the students and teachers that have continued to work hard, and I'm thankful for the support that our principal has given us to make sure we have what we need to make it happen. Thank you for allowing me to, this opportunity to share our school story with you today. And I will pass the microphone over to Kelly Jerron, Supervisor for Specially Designed Instruction.
Next slide, please. Good afternoon. The chart on this slide shows math proficiency across the last two years for our priority grades. The column on the left shows the grade, the name of the assessment, and in blue, it shows the overall percentage for all of our students. The middle column and the column on the right shows proficiency for students receiving special education services. A review of data must include our diploma-bound students, but also our students pursuing a certificate of completion or alternate learning outcomes, because we are accountable to MSDE for that data also, and we are responsible for ensuring that they also have equitable access and engagement in curriculum. So therefore, you'll see grade 11 So therefore, you'll see grade 11 data for Dynamic Learning Maps as it is an assessment grade for these students. As you can see, this data shows that we need to continue to equip our teachers with strategies to support our students receiving special education services in the area of math. Next slide, please. "We would like to elevate the use of co-teaching to follow along with what Tacoma Park is doing and as it relates specifically to students receiving special education services. Briefly, co-teaching is where you have two teachers teaching. You have a general education teacher who is the expert in the content, so today, that is in math. You also have a special education teacher who is the expert in providing that specially-designed instruction and implementing the IEP. This relationship is where they plan and instruct together, and the benefits of it are it increases small-group instruction, it increases student-to-student discussion and the ability of students to talk and support each other in the work. All of this because it does decrease the student-to-teacher ratio. For our youngest learners, we have to be very deliberate in making connections between their math experiences and what's happening in the classroom, in the curriculum. So you might see teachers doing things like teaching students songs to help them remember how to count, or teaching students how to use concrete things such as a number line to help them learn how to add and subtract, and have those, those visual and those hands-on experiences around the classroom that help them make those connections to the curriculum and the math content. Tacoma Park highlighted their work around co-teaching and how it had positive impacts on student data. As an action for us, I do believe that we must work now with Tacoma Park to find out how exactly they positively impacted their students and what we can learn from them to replicate in other schools, to see positive outcomes for our students receiving special education services." I will now turn the presentation over to Tamara Hewlett, Director of the Department of English Learners and Multilingual Education.
Good afternoon, everyone. Next slide, please. So here on this data slide, as similar with the slide that we saw for the services of special education, we have the total number of test takers, but we have two additional columns. And if you did not tune in to last our previous meeting on ELA, I will spend a little time explaining the recently exited emergent multilingual learners, who they are. So we have our current students noted as emergent multilingual learners, and then we have our recently exited emergent multilingual learners. These are students that we, by law, have to monitor for two years, once they exit out of the program. So we will have emergent multilingual learners who we call R E M Ls 1, and that means they're one year out of the program, and R E M L 2, and that means they're two years out of the program. We still monitor students after that, but federally, we are, and per MSD, we are required to monitor those students, just in case they need additional supports even when they exit, because when students exit out of English Language Development Services, it does not mean they have reached full English proficiency. It just means they have enough English proficiency that they should be able to navigate grade-level curriculum. We see that our recently exited emergent multilingual learners are doing better than our students who are currently receiving services and almost keeping pace in some grade levels, in our priority grade levels, with the total test takers as well. So it's very important to highlight that with enough English proficiency, our students are working as hard as possible and meeting those measures. We still have a lot of work to do in math, and our students are working hard. Next slide, please. So one of the intentional strategies that we are putting into place around English Language Development is professional learning, also the same for, for special education services, but right now, we're highlighting what we're doing in, in English Language Development. So on the screen, you'll see images, which actually came from recent professional learning experiences that we had. So bear with me as we step into a fifth-grade classroom and experience a word problem that our students would have to attend to. So at the 2012 London Olympics, Michael Phelps won the gold medal in the men's 200-meter butterfly. He swam the first 50 meters in 26.96 seconds, and the second 50 meters took him 25.99 seconds. What was his total time? So now imagine, as an English speaker, you reading this problem, you visualizing, you might know who Michael Phelps is, you might know the conventions, that language, when you capitalize the first letters, that is representing a name. You might understand what it means to swim, so even if you don't know the name, you understand it's somebody swimming. And you may not know the stroke of a butterfly, but you understand it's swimming, and we're looking for a total time. Now imagine a student who is learning the language and the nuances that all have to be in place in order to understand that word problem. And it is very critical to understand that this is the experience of our EMLs in their classrooms every day. Language is, in math, very heavy, and so as an EML, I might say, what is a Michael Phelps? Or who is a Michael Phelps? Right? And then, a butterfly. Well, I might know butterfly in my first language. If I were a Spanish speaker, it'd be mariposa. So I'm like, okay, a mariposa. And then, wait, now I need to understand that I'm not talking about a mariposa, I'm talking about a stroke of swimming, all to understand that I need to add those total times. So learning language in the context of every content area, but specifically for math, is nuanced and at the layer of our students with limited or interrupted formal education, because these exemplars came from the professional learning community that we held for our students, our teachers of students with limited or interrupted formal education. So when we take the time to provide professional learning to our staff, we are trying to make that language visible. To an English speaker, all of those things, maybe the first or second read makes sense, and I know to just add those two. For our EMLs, they need scaffolded instruction, and so, for example, you see Realia right there. Teacher pulled out their phone. Well, students are familiar with their phone. There's a timer on the phone. Let's make this come to life. So using real-world objects and showing what it means to get to 26 point whatever seconds, a student starts to understand, and they don't need all of the, the language to be able to, to now attend to the math if they are provided the necessary supports. Also, movement. And so, yes, we can say, a butterfly, yes, butterfly. However, in this case, we're talking about swimming like this, and getting the students to use their body to understand that words have multiple meanings, and they can start to attend to the, the word problem. So that's an elementary example, and off to the right, you see a secondary example. That's a professional learning community we recently started in collaboration with the math team, because our students with limited or interrupted formal education are now being taught their math courses from a math-certified teacher. And what we heard from the math-certified teachers were, we don't know how to do this. We don't know how to make that language visible. And so it's important that we respond to the needs of our staff, and so we held a professional learning community, committee, community that showed, from a secondary perspective, yes, we might not be doing this with the older kids, but how can we use visuals in this case to demonstrate what is being asked of the students? So it's very important that we provide targeted professional learning. We have varying needs of our emergent multilingual learners in the system, and so providing that targeted professional learning. For our two-way immersion schools, we have a partnership where we have a professional learning community around what it means to teach math in two languages, and we are working through work, getting together with the resource teachers. So responding to what the data is telling us, responding to what the teachers are telling us, and responding to what our students need, that's the strategy. And it's going to take consistent collaboration across offices to ensure that we are responding in kind. I will now turn it over to Dr. Logan, who will take us on our next strategy.
Thank you, Ms. Hewlett. Let's go to the next slide, please. Good afternoon, everyone. So as Ms. Hewlett shared, success for our students does come when they build mathematical understanding and the language at the same time. One specific example of an instructional resource that supports teachers in doing this are our mathematical language routines that are actually embedded in our Illusive Math Curriculum. You heard Mr. Valera give an example of one of them and talk about the work that they're doing at Tacoma Park Middle School to ensure that this is happening in the classroom and instruction, from planning to instruction, actually, and it's exactly what we, we want to see. So he just actually helped to bolster my portion of the presentation today, and I'll give a few other examples as well. Math language routines are quick routines, and they really are designed to do just that. They are supposed to be used during instruction, and they're to engage deeply, help students engage deeply with math concepts. They're going to help our students to be able to articulate their thinking, to collaborate with their peers, and focus on clarity, critiquing what's happening, and to communicate, to better communicate. These routines are going to help all learners. And so while they are, yes, proven to specifically support those students who are EMLs, they're going to help all of our students. They're going to help students who are maybe in need of some extra support, they're going to help students who are maybe needing an extra boost to be, to have that extra support to maybe engage with their peers in the classroom, depending on the learner. That's why we say know the math and also know your students, because depending on what your students might need for the specific lesson, that's how you might tailor and select which routine will match the lesson for the day. So just to give a couple of examples, you heard Information Gap, which was the example that Mr. Valera gave. Another routine that I'll highlight is Compare and Connect, where students compare their approach or solutions with others. So for example, fostering connections between different problem-solving methods. So in the lesson, the students might first solve the problem themselves, and then they'll pair up, and they will make connections to their peers, they'll make, look for similarities and differences, and they'll have to talk to each others about, each other about what they see in their approach to solving the problem, and talk about that with each other. Another routine is Three Reads, which encourages comprehension by reading a problem three times. So the way that this routine works is, first focusing on context, maybe you read the problem all together. So if you take the example of the problem that Ms. Hewlett just read, just read, the class would read that problem all together with the teacher, just for context, just to understand exactly what the problem is asking. Then you would go on for the second read-through, you would focus on the math question, maybe you would do this with a partner, and then the third read, you would highlight that key information from the problem. And so again, these are quick routines to help the students as they are grappling with the content in the classroom. Starting this summer, we've intensified our professional learning around these routines, specifically with our leaders. While they're embedded in the curriculum, for our secondary math curriculum, we really wanted to highlight, to ensure that our, our leaders know what they should be listening for and looking for with these routines, as we do expect that they're being used regularly in the classroom. And so we started this summer, we've continued the learning through, throughout the school year in our, with our math content specialists as well. And so we'll continue to do that throughout the year, just so the accountability for usage of these routines during instruction continues. Next slide, please. And Dr. Pew.
And back to the board for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask the board members to turn on their lights, and I'll start on this side this time, Ms. Yang.
Yes, thank you so much. I have a number of questions.
Just a few, so that we can come back.
Yes, definitely. Someone, really quick. Is, is co-teaching used, because one of the examples given was about co-teaching. Is the co-teaching model implemented across the county? Is that implemented in all schools?
So not all schools are able to implement the co-teaching model, because not all schools have enough staff to do that. So it is a model that, that English Language Development encourages, but it is a model that is hard to mandate, because if I have a teacher in a building who is not full-time, because my student population is low, but I have students spread throughout all grade levels, it would be very hard for me to provide services to all of my students if I co-taught for X number of minutes in one particular class. So we, it's highly encouraged, and we provide learning and support around it, but it is hard to mandate.
Okay, understand. So then, my question will be, if we have classrooms that do co-teaching and classrooms that don't, we have schools that do co-teaching and schools that don't, how do we know whether co-teach, do we know, do we have data to show that co-teaching is effective? Or that it's making a difference for our students in those settings? And, and how, how do we know? How do we know?
I could also ask the administration to be succinct in their responses. Thank you.
So in the Center for Applied Linguistics report, they provided some research around the effectiveness of co-teaching and suggested that model, and we do have anecdotal data from work that we've done with schools, for example, Tacoma Park, what they're seeing in their data, to demonstrate the effectiveness of co-teaching.
Okay, so it's anecdotal data, so far, we have.
And recommended by Cal.
Recommended by Cal, okay. Okay. Then I have a question about math in the classroom. So when we work with a student and we discover there's holes in the student's understanding of concepts, leading up to the current concept, what do we do? What is the, what does the, how do the teacher address that in our classrooms? And system-wide do we have a recommendation or practices?
Yeah, I can talk about that. So there is a number of things that teachers can do when you notice that the students don't have the background they need to access the material. And we've, thanks to the co-teaching model, thanks to having like a co-teacher, then you can implement, like there are different models, and you can change and choose what do you need for that specific lesson. So you can do rotations, you can do small groups, you can do reteaching, you can use the iExcel platform to address those needs that they have. And it comes, yeah, from the planning and the, but also like in, so there is, there is a number of things that we do in the classroom to address that.
So what I'm hearing is, it depends on the classroom teachers to address how to cover those holes. Then my question will be then, in our curriculum, do teachers have flexibilities in terms of time, right? If you say, this week, we need to cover this much, but if the teacher discovering holes, are they flexibility for the classroom teachers to make decision based on the performance or understanding of their, of their student?
We do have some, some flex days built into the pacing calendar for teachers to be able to do some of that. We do have pacing calendars that teachers do have to keep up with in order to stay on pace with the curriculum by the end of the marking period, but there's flexibility built in because of exactly what you're describing.
Dr. Valera, are we going to say something else? No.
Okay. I'll come back. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. So I'm very curious about your implementation at Tacoma Middle School, but I just want to get a better sense of the student population at Tacoma Middle School, to see if it's equivalent to some of the other schools that we should be looking at as well, in implementing something like this. So, and that's not my So that's not my district, so forgive me if I'm a little ignorant. But how many students do we have at Tacoma Park Middle School about?
So we have about 1,200 students.
Okay, so about 1,200 students. And how many of those are EML learners? About, I don't know, maybe, maybe the staff can help you out.
Or give a percentage.
At a glance.
At a glance, yeah. You don't have to give me a perfect number. And how many are special ed? Because you also have a gifted and talented program at Tacoma Park Middle School. So one of my questions that I have is, is that, is that put into that 38, is that everybody? Gifted and talented EML, everybody into that 39.3%? Okay, and how many kids does that represent? Sorry, I'm a very number kind of.
So if it's, you say like 40% of the 1,200?
Oh, sorry, like 40% of 1,200, so like.
And that is 600, 500.
Five, about 500 kids?
Four something.
Okay, and then, then, and then you have in there, you have the EML and the special ed and all of it. Okay. So as an EML learner, as somebody who started in ESOL, as they call it as a debit grant, to me, language is very relevant when it comes to, so I was looking at the Phelps, the Phelps example, right? And to me, it would have meant nothing. I would have no relevance to that, to that question. Or somebody asked me about cricket or baseball at that age, it would mean nothing. But if somebody said Messi in soccer, my ears were perked up, and I would have made the connection. So when it comes to Ms. Yang's question of flexibility, my biggest concern is, and Mr. Valera, you're, you're a teacher, you're the expert here, how important it is for a teacher, for, for our teachers to relate to our student population with cultural competence. And I know we use that very loosely, but it is very real to, to the, to the young people that we're teaching, to make those connections. So to make learning relevant to not just math, but to science and to English. And, and if we, and the whole repetition thing. Like I want, I want these young people to learn it, not just to repeat it, to just pass a test, but to actually learn the content so that we can build on it, and then they can move on. So I think that's what the challenge has been, because when I look at the statistics, right? We kind of lose them along the way. So how can we make, what is the best way of instruction to make that relevant to our kids? And one of the things I did not see in the breakdown with a special ed is the kids that are both special ed and EML. And what is it that we're doing for that population? But that's for the staff. But for you, I just want to, I just, I just, I just want to hear a little bit of hope that we can actually break through a lot of these barriers that we're seeing with this population.
Yeah, so, I mean, if I'm understanding correctly, like you're asking, like there are like two questions, no? Like how do you relate? Like how can you make the learning relevant to the students? And then, how do you step away from, how do we make students to do more thinking? Is that, okay, so, yeah, for the first one, I completely agree with you. Like the curriculum is the curriculum, and we can change it. It's more, you know, we can modify the lessons. But at the same time, I think it also relies on the team and the department and the teacher to see, like, look at, look at your students and notice that they don't understand what you're talking about. Like you can see it in their faces, almost, like, because then, but then, you know, that connection. If that, that is a lesson that I'm teaching, and I see that my students is like, number one, like we need to check for understanding, no? Like, guys, do you know who's Mike Phelps? Like, and then if you, you look at, and they're like, hmm, it's like, and then you can pull some, like a visual really quick or then, but then pair it like, like with an example that you think they might understand. Maybe, maybe it's Messi. Maybe it's you running the mile for PE. You also timing yourself, like making those connections of the, to ensure that they understand the lesson. Because if not, you lost your audience, right? So that is something that we need to be very aware of, like, and for all our, our students, but specifically for more, our diverse students. And then for the second question that you bring in, this is why we wanted to focus on building thinking classrooms at Tacoma, because we're trying to step away from mimicking the math to do the thinking. And so this research, the building thinking classroom, this is, I don't know if you're familiar, but it's, it's a 15-year research that showed what are the best conditions for student engagement and thinking. And that's why, like, we brought it into as a whole department, as a, as a school at Tacoma and say like, okay, let's try it out. Because we want to step away from, from just mimicking the math. And then, you know, when there's, when there's an assessment like NCAP or something with a high-order thinking, like very difficult assessments, they don't know what to do because they're not used to the thinking.
Just quickly, the building thinking model that you brought into Tacoma Park, where was that from? Where did you, where did you find it? And are we implementing that in any other school besides Tacoma Park Middle School?
Yes, it's a book. And if you remember, last year, we highlighted a teacher from Montgomery Blair who talked about it.
Yes, I was just, listen, right here, Blair High School is just the same thing right here.
Yes, and so that is something that we are, we are studying at a district level. Many of our schools are studying it closely and implementing it as well.
And that is the high school we went to visit.
So, so I just, just to bring it all back, how important it is when our teachers and folks come and testify and share things that really, really work in their classroom, and this is the impact that it can have. But this is two schools out of 211. And I just want us to kind of see the bigger picture, that we really, I, I just feel like we're out of time a little bit every time that we wait to implement things that, things that really work with our learners that are, where we're leaving behind. So thank you. I appreciate it. And I'll leave my colleagues to it.
If I may, sorry, just to give you the percentages you asked for.
Oh, thank you.
So per the dashboard, the EML percentage is 8.6%. The students receiving special education services is 8.2%. And, I know you like numbers, so last June, June 1st, we ended with 115 students receiving ELD services. And as of October 1st, at Tacoma Park, we have 132 EMLs. So the population is growing at that school.
Oh, sorry, he has something else to say.
Go ahead.
No.
I just want to say something really quick, like all the, like most of the strategies that we implemented were implemented for the on-grade level classes on purpose. Like most of these strategies, and even this year, like we're planning for more co-teaching, professional development is for my, for, for our teachers who teach the on-grade level classes with, and these are the classes with most of our EML students and students with, but we focus on them specifically.
Because it's amazing, because you, you can use the same technique for the general population. So everybody, you, you're lifting everybody up. Everybody benefits from it. Okay, this is very exciting. Sorry, I got really excited.
Ms. Wolf.
Yeah, I want to follow up a little bit on Ms. Yang's discussion about the co-teaching model. And, you know, I believe that that's a support that would benefit all students, in particularly some of our low-performing Black students, which I don't hear very much about. And it seems to me that this is an equity concern. It's a model that works. I understand that the lack of staff to support it. But what I'd like to get is an idea of what schools have a co-teaching model, particularly elementary schools. The other thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is vocabulary. My colleague here, Grace, she talked about what students coming from her country might understand. But you know, we have a lot of Black students that have very low vocabulary. They don't have the, the exposure that some of our kids have had. They would not recognize a lot of these terms and know what to expect or what is expected of them either. I never hear discussion about that, you know? Because to me, you would have to say something about stickball or basketball, something that doesn't require money. Many of them have never even seen a swimming pool, have no idea who Michael Phelps is, and much less the butterfly like you. They would think it's something flying around outside. I mean, a lot of the things we talk about should be applied and discussed more broadly than, than I'm hearing it. Because I never exactly hear what's going to uplift our Black students. And I know that when we uplift any student, we're, we can uplift all students. But I don't hear a discussion of it. And I want to thank you for coming. I really appreciated what you had to say about Tacoma Park Middle School. Thank you.
Ms. Hewlett, you were, you want to say something?
I, I was just going to say that in our department, we like to say that everyone's an academic language learner, right? And so this is why it's also important to have English language development instruction in the content areas. Because all students can benefit from the academic language supports. So I give a thumbs up to, in support of your comments.
It's mostly a cultural competency issue to me. And I think we still have a long way to go in that regard. Thank you.
Ms. Harris.
But we will talk about it in the strategic planning process.
Yeah, thank you. So I do want to echo exactly what Ms. Wolf and Ms. Yang have been talking about because I'm very concerned, actually, that we're talking about our special populations of students that we have chronically served not well. And these, these strategies that we have identified to better support the learning of these students and help them achieve is co-planning, co-teaching, and deliberate language strategies. But we aren't rolling those out with fidelity across the system. And I want to echo exactly what Ms. Wolf said. I want, and Dr. Taylor, as we are moving into, that we, well, we're not moving into, we're in budget season. So if these are the strategies that our whole strategy, our whole plan to support these learners better and help them achieve better and meet grade-level standards, if this is the strategy, co-teaching, co-planning, deliberate language, you know, strategies, and we are not able to implement them with fidelity across the system, then we are not doing the work that we're supposed to be doing. So wanting to know directly where, and, and, no judgment, right? But we need to know where we are implementing these strategies, in which schools, which of our 211 schools are with fidelity utilizing these strategies, co-teaching, co-planning, and the, and the deliberate language strategies, the English language development strategies, which are right, apply to everybody, not just emerging multilingual learners. And how we are measuring their student achievement against themselves. So we want to know how each kid is doing, how they're growing, and if these strategies are helping students grow. And compared to the schools that are not able, for whatever reason, to utilize these strategies. Because if this is working, we need to know that because we need to fund that. And we can't do that if we're just like, this is the strategy we've identified, some schools can do it, some can't. We need to, we need to be much more focused and grounded in this data so that we can make the decisions we need to make about the budget. Because we are, we are stewards of the public's money when it comes to how we serve students. And we need to know what's working and what's not. So I think we, we just need much more objective, comprehensive, system-wide data for that. And then a question for you, Mr. Valera. So, and when I'm looking at Tacoma Park data on this slide, 39.3, and I think this gets to something Ms. Ms. Yang was talking about initially, the 39.3 all students, so that includes the students in the math-science magnet. But I'm guessing, do many of the students in, in, you know, in receiving free and reduced-cost meals that are emergent multilingual learners or receiving special education services, are many of those students in the magnet?
Not as many as in the other program, in the comprehensive program.
Okay, so these, but you said these strategies are being used in grade-level instruction?
So let me clarify. Yeah, so the co-teaching, co-plan, so the student, so when you have a class with students with special needs, usually you have a co-teacher.
Okay.
Then the co-teaching, the co-planning and co-teaching strategies were focused on the on-grade level teachers because they had a co-teacher.
So it's not being utilized in the math-science magnet classes or?
The co-teaching, not necessarily, because they, they don't have a co-teacher. They don't have enough population in the classes to fund the co-teacher or to provide a co-teacher. What we do all across the Tacoma Park School is the building thinking classroom strategies. We're using those in every class.
So, but what I would suggest to you is that when we're really looking at how we're serving these students, we might want to separate out the students in the math-science magnet from the whole school because it's a different curriculum.
Yeah.
And I don't think you can, it's a different curriculum. So, yeah.
Right. And if I can say, like, that is exactly why our focus was, because we have at Tacoma, we have, and, and, and that could be a representation of the county. Like, we have kids in advanced math classes, in on-grade level classes, one year ahead, two years ahead. We have the magnet program. We have the ARS program at Tacoma as well, the autism program. So when we focused on the co-teaching and co-planning for the on-grade level teachers was with that, it was like differentiated, if that makes sense. Like, we knew our, our teachers, teaching, teaching on-grade level students needed a different strategy than if you're teaching students who are like two years ahead of the curriculum. So that's what we did.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Sure. So first, I want to say I associate myself with the comments of Ms. Wolf, every single one. Appreciate you raising that up. And Ms. Hewlett, I really appreciate how you delivered the strategic planning, like, learning on elementary and secondary. We have shortened the number of slides that we have, and we have really tightened it up to be able to go deep and explain what's happening in the classroom. Because you, you really helped people that are watching to understand what teachers are going through in the classroom in terms of trying to reach every student. And so I appreciated that breakdown, because I don't know that's something that everybody is thinking about. And it's important not only for the community to hear and know, it's also helpful for the board when we're making decisions and deciding what the next steps would be. So I had like two questions. You had talked about for our students, our EML students that are exiting, and that when they do exit, they're saying that they've been able to keep pace, but they're possibly could need some help. Are we, do we find that if we do have students that might need some additional supports, that it's readily available in their schools? Or are we having to do something extra to make certain that they can get those supports? I mean, is it?
So the English language development teachers monitor these students. And so they might do some consultation with the classroom teacher. But our classroom teachers also are, you know, trying to make sure all students are, are meeting the measures. So it's, it's a tightly woven dance where, from a department standpoint, we're monitoring to ensure the students have, you know, are, are meeting the measures. And then if there are concerns, then they're raised to our department, and then we work to triage because every, every case is different, you know? It might be a particular unit, it, it, that there's not enough background knowledge, and that's why the confusion is showing up. But it might be that the student, while they tested out for language development services, may need some re-entry plan into those language development services. So we would have to take every case, case by case. But the supports are in the schools with the English language development teachers and the classroom teachers working together.
Okay, I want to make sure there wasn't an additional. Now with the co-teaching model, is there some way that we pull the pairs into that? Do they get any training to be able to support or help in the classroom? Because based on what I, I hear that's happening, it just might seem like they could use or be able to help support in some way or somehow. But I don't know if there's anything different that they might need that they're actually not getting. And I know we've asked this question before, but are pairs receiving professional development or additional support to be able to help in the classroom? And I'm looking at you, Mr. Valera, but I don't know if I'm looking for you to answer the question. I'm, I'm looking at you, but I do have a question for you. So can anybody answer that?
We don't. So pair educators can definitely support with co-teaching in the classroom. There are various models that they're going to be able to support with the teacher with in the classroom. And we are, we don't have as much time to provide them professional learning, but there are opportunities for us to be able to work with them throughout the year.
Okay. Is it necessary or needed, or no?
It's always, anytime we get with them is needed, yes.
All right. And then, Mr. Valera, my question for you, then my last question. So in thinking about the work that's happening at Tacoma Park Middle School, how are we pulling parents into the fold to be able to provide some type of support at home that they might, I mean, I don't know if parents might need to do something in additional to be able to better support their students, and/or is there a way that you're sharing with parents what's happening different in the school, that way they are aware, they know what's going on?
So when we did the open house, no, the back-to-school night, we explained the building thinking classroom model to them so they were aware. For the parents at home, that is tricky for me because I want to involve them as much as we can. We did like a math night last year, and we invited them. We talked about the data. We played games, math games with them. But I know that not all the students have, you know, having parents like that can or support them. So for example, so what we, so our, most of our lessons, they are open to, the parents can click on our calendar, and they can see the lesson we're doing. The curriculum is open, like, it's in the MCPS website, like, they can see it. What we, so, and we send them the links whenever they ask. The only, so, but I, we're using, or I'm asking the teachers to use more iXL as our connection home because the problem is the curriculum per se, like you, isn't the discussion that, you know, everything comes together. So the curriculum is just like a set of problems, and the student, because it's a problem-based curriculum, so the students just work on the problems. But then it's at the end of the lesson when the teacher and the students have this discussion, when you synthesize the learning. So the parents don't see that at home, and then sometimes they're confused. It's like, oh, there is no examples, there is no how to do it. It's like, well, no, there's not because the curriculum has changed. iXL, though, is, for me, is an equitable tool because then the students at least, you know, they don't depend on somebody else telling them if they have the homework right or wrong. They can see it right away. There is videos, there are explanations, it can be translated to any language. So we use that.
Okay. So they may not need support or help, is that what you're saying?
No, they might need it. But at least it's something that they can use, you know, like.
So is iXL only available at home? Because I heard you say it's used daily. I mean, is it available to use at home or only at school?
Both.
Okay, okay.
So that is the connection that we're using with the parents. Like, if you want to help the students, have them work in iXL, and then talk to us if the students are, they have difficulties.
Okay.
I have a question about co-teaching again. So if I, if my school doesn't have enough teachers for co-teaching, how do the ELD students get their services?
So there are different models. You can plug into the classroom and pull the students aside, still working on the content, but elevating the language for the content. Strategic groupings, we find that our schools who have a minimal amount of English language development teaching staff, they make sure to group particular students. You know, if I have four classrooms, maybe I'll make sure to put the emergent multilingual learners of this grade level in two of the classrooms so that the teacher is not having to jump all around. And sometimes, depending on, you know, if a student is a newcomer, they might remove the student from the classroom environment for a little bit to provide additional language development services outside of. So you have to understand the context and then assign an appropriate program model for the students.
What percentage of schools would you say are using co-teaching versus other models?
I'm not sure. I don't want to make a guess in terms of percentage. We can tell you how many schools have staffing that could implement that. More of our schools have more than 3.0 FTEs, that's full-time teachers. We have very few that have less than a 1.0 full-time teacher, but we do have some schools who don't have a full 1.0 classroom teacher. So that's data we can get to you in terms of the breakdown of how many staff per school based on how many full-time teachers. But, you know, our bigger schools with our bigger programs who have an ELD teacher who can support, two ELD teachers who can support one grade level, those are prime examples and experiences where co-teaching can happen. A school that has 3.0 full-time teachers, they may be able to co-teach in one grade level, but not across all grade levels. So it's, again, kind of dependent and dependent on how many emergent multilingual learners are at every grade level.
And it's the principal's responsibility to ensure that whatever model, that's the accountability that stops with the principal. They have to ensure that whatever model they're using, it's being used effectively. I think Mr. Valera mentioned that they realize that they were not using their co-teaching, that the expertise of both adults as effectively. So I'm interested in, you know, in the future, learning more about how we hold ourselves accountable to the resources that we are budgeting for in our schools. Ms. Yang and then Ms. Rivetta.
Yes, I have a data question. One is about iXL usage outside of school. Can our district track the usage? And I want to see if we are providing any incentive for our families to use it, right?
Yes, we can track the usage, and we do track and monitor that usage very closely. And we do provide incentives. This is our second year using iXL, and last year, we had several contests and different incentive programs throughout the year for the schools just to encourage usage. We did something over winter break, for example, to encourage students to use it at home to continue engagement.
I will appreciate getting that information.
Sure.
Yeah. And then today is our second portion of our conversation on math. And for our students, overall, if I look at it, I am particularly concerned about our middle school math data. So first of all, this should not be a blame game, okay? So in the best of circumstances, middle school math is uniquely difficult, right? This is the time students have to get fractions, and it really is a connecting time to really determine how they will do after middle school, even after high school and beyond, right? So decimals and a lot of things, it really predict their achievement. But what I'm trying to say is, it seems like we can't do the same thing over and over again. I think you will agree, right? What haven't we tried? What haven't we tried? For the things we are trying, what data we have and how deliberate we are in doing so? So now, I have scoured the internet or asked other people, and I know that there are some other things, other places I try. For example, Indiana State has a grant program called Indiana Learns, and it's, state give out $1,000 income-based, right, to students for high dosage tutoring to particularly help students to catch up the gaps in their understanding, right? So I'm wondering, can state of Maryland have something similar, right? And also, research has shown in some school districts that they have tried double down on math time, increased the instructional time, and it has shown that in one academic year, students can increase and catch up a year and a quarter or more because they have doubled down their time in math and practice and really catch up. So what I'm saying is, are we at the right time and condition to try some of these strategies? Or maybe certain group of our students at the right place and right time to try some of these strategies? So it's clear for us, you know?
The short answer is yes. We are always happy to try new strategies. I think the reason that you're hearing these over and over and over again is because we have an implementation and have had implementation challenges. So look at the number of students that we have who are in seventh grade, who are actually taking the seventh grade grade level assessment. It's not all of them. It's not even half of them. Many of our students are accelerated starting in fourth and fifth grade, and they continue to be accelerated. So you can build more time in by taking fourth grade math in fourth grade, fifth grade math in fifth grade, and that way. So now's a perfect opportunity to try a variety of things because the math standards, according to the state, are going to change. They're also going to change Algebra I. It'll now be an integrated algebra. So I think we have a lot of opportunities to explore what are the math pathways and how much math and how much time do they need at each level? But the middle school is where you see, the middle school students are all taking different courses. So you're not seeing a whole cohort of students taking the MCAP. You're seeing the students who have not been accelerated taking the MCAP.
Thank you for that explanation. But still, right, that's a big chunk of our student population that we need to look at. And, you know, can we be creative with our scheduling, right? How do, but what I'm saying is, it's clear that we have to think outside of the box and figure out where it is time.
Thank you, Ms. Yang. Ms. Rivetta.
Very quickly, on the accountability piece, I was thinking while everybody was talking. So you're doing an amazing work with these young people in middle school. Then my biggest concern is what's going to happen to them in high school? You have built so much, you're doing this, and then they're going to get to high school where this model is non-existent. So what's going to happen then? And I think for me, having a continuum of, you know, so we can still building, you know, we can still build on what we're doing at Tacoma Park Middle School. So when your kids get to high school, they can still have that kind of teaching and support to be able then to complete, you know, 10th grade math and 11th grade math and be able to graduate being literate in math, right? And to the point of EML kids, you know, you can be an EML, and you can be gifted and talented. And what are we doing for those kids that, you know, that this model, you know, what is doing for them? Or the kids that you might, you might address them now, and they might be gifted and talented in UML classes, and they could go to gifted and talented classes. And, you know, and for our black and brown kids, you know, that whole accountability issue of what are we doing now, right? And I hear about the co-teaching, and the co-teaching seems like it's a very rare thing. This is what I'm hearing, is it's great, but it's rare, it's exotic kind of thing. Well, I kind of want to make it available to all, but it has funding implications, right? So we really need to assess, I think greatly, the best ways that we're doing things that are going to benefit the greater good, in a sense, so our kids can do better in math. And I hear the explanation about, you know, everything that we're doing with who's taking the MCAP, who's not, and so on. So I'm really concerned about those kids who, when they graduate and they're looking for work, and when I hire them, they cannot even do their timesheet. That's what I'm trying to get to the point of, that we really need to do a better job. And if things have not been working before, then can we take a hard look at it and be really realistic about the things that are not working and not be like we have been doing it for 20 years, we have been doing it for 10 years, and they're not working? They're not working. Virtual thinking is not going to get us different results. But if we see things that are working, that they have data behind it, scientific proof, and things that our kids can achieve, can we please be open to it?
Thank you. Last question, Ms. Harris, briefly.
Yes. And Dr. Pugh, I'm glad that you talked about that, the way our students start really differentiating into different math pathways, often as early as fourth grade. I know we talked about this last year, and I just want to ask again that when we present data like this, like the grade six and algebra data, that we add in a layer that is sharing exactly which students are we talking about, and what metric are we looking at, and how that relates to the class that they're taking. So when we're looking at these grade six students, these are students in grade-level math, taking the MCAP, the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment, that's supposed to relate to that grade-level content, and what percentage of students are those that are actually taking that exam? I think we need to be really careful because I think we're all getting a little demoralized when the data, which, the numbers that look not good, and then the people in the community are just yelling at us all the time, telling us we're just failing, we're just failing, we're just failing. And so we want to be really clear about what we're sharing and what it actually means. And same thing with our algebra data because we know students engage in algebra at whole, lots of different places in their academic journey. And so we want to be really clear when we're talking about algebra data in middle school or high school, what students are we talking about, and when they're being assessed in relation to when they're taking the courses. I think that is going to help us tell our story better than just these bigger, broader categories. And the question I have is, so this isn't great data. Are we, or do we have the capacity to look at these exams, these MCAP exams, and the results, and identify by student, by grade, by class, what they're not doing well so we can compare that to what we're doing to figure out how to refine our teaching practices? Is that something that we are, that can be done? Because this is not our assessment, this is a state assessment.
Yes, absolutely. What you just said, we get the data by strand, and so we can see as a district which strands are higher or lower. We can see it by school, we can see it by classroom. And I think what we've seen across the state is modeling and reasoning, the way of teaching mathematics has shifted quite a bit, and modeling and reasoning, being able to show your work and explain your reasoning for getting to a response is an area of weakness across the entire state and here in Montgomery County.
Because I think, as Dr. Taylor has been so clear, we cannot be data-informed, we have to be data-driven. So when we see those results, I think one of the things we want to build into these sorts of opportunities to share with community is this is what our students aren't doing well, and this is what we're doing about it. Because that's central, that's the bottom line of it, I think, for me. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciate the deeper understanding on what we're doing to address the data. Thank you, Mr. Valera, for coming to talk about your great work. So we will, I guess, continue this conversation on special populations, or at least for the English language learners. Yep. All right, we are now moving on to agenda item number eight. As chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, I will ask Ms. Wolf to get us started.
Waiting to see who's coming up.
Dr. Addison.
Dr. Addison. Okay, I actually had "Good Afternoon" on here, it's almost "Good Night," but I am excited to talk to you a little bit today, along with Ms. Sharon and Dr. Addison, about our strategic planning process for FY '26 through FY '30. We are really excited. We've been doing a lot of work. So I want to start out by talking to you a little bit about what the Strategic Planning Committee does, and that is, we look at long-range visioning. Now, you say, what is that? I mean, it sounds good, but what is it? That means we are out in the community, we're out in our schools, and we're looking at, what are the opportunities there? What are the challenges we're seeing? What do we need to think about as we build our new strategic plan? We also do performance monitoring. And if you've tuned into any of our meetings, you've heard us take deep dives on some of the issues that are coming before the board. So any day, we might be talking about math, we might be talking about safety, we might be talking about literacy, but we are taking a deeper dive into it. And lastly, we talk about communication and outreach. Are we reaching the people that we need to reach? Do we need a better strategy? So now, the strategic planning process is going to be very formalized, and we're trying to involve as many people in this process as possible. So the development- So the development process this time is composed of five phases. And it will include feedback from individuals and groups that are most impacted, students, staff, and families. Those are our constituents, and that's who we want to hear from. So you will hear Ms. Sharon describe a little bit more about what we did, particularly in Phase One. So while we are in the process of developing our new strategic plan, we're not going to drop the ball on the old one because we still have this year on our strategic plan, which, as you know, included three priority areas: academic excellence, well-being and family engagement, professional and operational excellence. So you will be able to tune into our meetings and hear how we are meeting our goals in those areas. So right now, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Sharon to begin the discussion, to share with you where we are in our planning. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So as Ms. Wolf said today, we are going to be talking about our year-long process to engage everyone in the strategic plan. We're really excited about the what, the why, and the how that we're going about engaging in strategic planning this year. If you go to your next slide, please. The next slide, please. So this strategic plan is truly designed, this engagement process is truly designed to be anti-racist and culturally responsive. Our goal is to have our strategic plan done by July of 2025. And our process is really going to include a little bit of a different take than how we have done strategic plans in the past. We're making sure that all of our engagement is aligned with the Board of Education's community engagement policy and is culturally responsive. We're going to be examining systemic barriers through root cause analysis. We're not just going to be looking at things tinkering around the edges. The reality is that it can be fairly easy to identify goals. But really thinking about how we address the root causes of systemic issues in our district is really what we're going to be focusing on through our engagement process. And lastly, we really want to focus on creating transparency through our strategic planning website and the community engagement process. And the strategic planning website is currently live today. Next slide, please. So alignment to board priorities. All of the board priorities are aligned to our strategic plan, not only to the actual content of the strategic plan, but the priorities are aligned with how we're engaging folks in the strategic plan. Next slide. Ms. Wolf did a great job kind of explaining the role of the Strategic Planning Committee. I want to thank the Strategic Planning Committee for always pushing us in our meetings to think differently and outside the box, and how we're really digging deeply into this engagement. And as Ms. Wolf said, I think one of the integral components of the Strategic Planning Committee is that they're not just giving feedback and input on the process for the future strategic plan, but they are integral in monitoring and providing that accountability to the current strategic plan that we have. Next slide. So why are we doing this differently? I think that you heard, there's a couple quotes I actually wrote down from the math presentation. I heard Julie say, "We can't keep doing the same thing and expecting to get different results." I heard Grace say, "Wishful thinking won't get us different results." That is exactly the approach that we're taking for the strategic plan. Dr. Taylor, at the start of the year in A&amp;S, one of the first things that he said as he was opening up and communicating his vision to the district, he shared the quote, "Your organization is perfectly designed to get the results that you are getting." And we know in the anti-racist audit, it was very clear on the first page of our executive summary, "The implementation of policies and applications of best practices differs greatly from school to school, suggesting that our system is currently fragmented." There is no doubt that we have best practices out there. But as you even heard in the math presentation, and it's not the first time that you've heard it, it's oftentimes not consistent. And it's not consistent because we need to take a look at the systemic barriers that are preventing us from being able to ensure that every single student in Montgomery County Public Schools succeed. So as we have designed this strategic planning process, it has been with that approach and lens in mind. Next slide. Okay. So on the left-hand side, I'm going to start talking through this with you, what you're seeing on this slide, from the bottom first. I actually showed my son that picture just to see what he would say. He's 12 years old. I said, "What are you looking at here?" The left, bottom left. He said, "Well, that's a phone." He didn't understand the rotary part. And when he looked at the calculator, he said that was a little computer. So he couldn't even identify that. But that was modern technology in 1970. We could also add things when we think about instruction in the classroom, blackboards, chalk, paper, reports, encyclopedias. My dad recently was telling a story about the use of his World Book Encyclopedias. And again, that is very outdated information. But in 1970, that was how we were building all of our systems and structures as a school system around that type of technology. Fast forward, you see the picture of the phone. And strategically, in that phone is ChatGPT, and that was intentional. And the reason that was intentional is to show and demonstrate that the world in which our students are living and experiencing is drastically different. But I wonder, and I would argue, I argue that maybe some of our systems and structures as a school system have not changed as much as the experience that our students have every day. In addition, when we overlay the change in just our society and the technology that our students are experiencing and our society has adapted to, we take a look at our demographics. And what I want to highlight here on the demographics slide, and this is not the first time you've seen this, I know. And I know it's not the first time our audience has seen this. But the thing that I want to point out to you here today is that when you look at 1970, it is very clear what our demographics were. That we were vastly a majority white community in Montgomery County. But around 2000 is where that shift took place. And when you look at the difference between 2000 and 2024, there's not that much of a difference in our demographics. But how many times have you heard, and I know I have, people use language like, "Our demographics are changing," as if this change did not happen 24 years ago? And the reason we bring that up is that language matters first. And it's important for people to have a good understanding is that this is not new. Our demographics are not brand new. We have changed, and we have changed for a while. But as we're thinking about how we're addressing the system through a strategic planning process, we got to make sure that we're planning for the students that we serve today, not the students that we serve in 1970, not with the same technology, not in the same society, but the students we have in front of us. And that is our goal as we work on this strategic plan. Next slide. So there are five phases, as Ms. Wolf indicated, to our strategic plan. And while we're today here talking about the launch of our strategic plan, right? And we're kind of opening this up for our community, this work has started, it started in the summer. So we are well into it. And we have finished Phase One. And that is the purpose of today, is to give you the overview as well as some data from what we learned in Phase One. So Phase One, we engaged over 200 stakeholders, leaders within our organization and outside of our organization, and including students. And in that process, we had them identify skills that students needed to graduate. We got feedback on that, as well as the systemic issues that must be overcome as a district in order to create that change that we want to see. And what I will say, and what you will see when Dr. Addison shares the thematic data, is that it was extremely consistent from when we talked to students, to when we talked to central office staff, to when we talked to community members. We were hearing very similar things. So those patterns were very clearly identified. We're then going to take these themes that we identified and use that report, which is also live and available to the public as of today. And we're entering into Phase Two. Phase Two is where we will engage in root cause analysis on all the Phase One themes. And we will begin identifying strategies and goals that really get to those systemic issues that we need to address. This is going to be done collaboratively with our community and be brought out largely to our stakeholders for feedback. We'll then enter in, and you'll see on the slide that that goes till December. We will then enter into our Phase Three. Phase Three is where we will take all of this feedback, all of this information, our current state data, the research that says where we should be. And we will create the academic, social, and operational goals in alignment with our state mandates and district priorities. Phase Four is an integral part of the strategic planning process. What we have oftentimes heard, and I know you have heard it as board members, is that we, people don't feel that we authentically engage them in processes with the district, which erodes trust. And one of the things that we have heard is that people devote a lot of time and energy into providing their feedback, sitting on work sessions, and then it goes poof into thin air, and no one knows where the information went. This is why we strategically developed our Phase Four. Phase Four is our opportunity to say, "We heard you say this. We created this. Did we get it right?" And so that we go out, people see what we put together, have an opportunity to do final feedback before we get to our Phase Five, which is our final adoption and approval by the Board of Education. And concurrently, where schools and offices will be developing action plans to meet these goals. Next slide, please. So who did we engage in Phase One? As I indicated before, and I know some of that print is very small, but we wanted to make sure that we recognized and identified all of the different organizations and groups. I think what's important to note is that none of this was done through a survey. We know oftentimes that surveys are the easiest way to engage large swaths of people. But oftentimes, you miss out on that dialogue, that engagement, to really hear from people what they're thinking and feeling. All of these engagements were one-on-one touches, either through Zoom or through groups. And Dr. Taylor actually participated with us in many of them, which I will say, knowing that a new superintendent has a ton of commitments on his calendar, every time we asked him to attend and said, "Hey, we think this would be a great group for you to engage in," his response was, "I want to be in every single space that I can be." And he was. So he had an opportunity as part of his entry plan to gather the feedback that is informing his decision-making through this as well. Next slide. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Addison to talk about what we learned.
Good evening. As was shared, we engaged with many groups that included over 200 individuals. And for the next three slides, I will share with you the themes that were elevated based on questions asked of participants. Beginning with this slide, we asked participants to share, from their perspective, the most important skills and abilities students need to know and be able to do to be prepared for a successful future. And so there were seven themes. The first theme related to critical thinking and problem solving is where participants shared the importance of students being analytical thinkers and decision-makers so that they can approach problems with creative solutions. The theme of communication and social skills was related to students being able to convey ideas, not only orally, but also in written form. Participants shared how these skills support the development of meaningful relationships and navigating diverse perspectives. The theme of technology and digital literacy was related to its effective use and preparation for the workforce that relies more heavily on digital tools than it did in the past, as you heard Ms. Sharon share. Final, sorry, financial literacy was a fourth theme where we heard our students advocating for in the past few years. And participants shared that students need to be knowledgeable of managing personal finances and making informed decisions about spending, saving, and avoiding debt. The theme of resilience and self-advocacy was related to supporting students in building their confidence to navigate both academic and professional environments. Career and workforce readiness as a theme was about ensuring students are provided hands-on experience through opportunities such as internships and industry partnerships to support career readiness. And the final theme for most important skills was cultural competency and civility, which participants deemed essential for promoting empathy and enabling students to respectfully engage in personal and professional settings. And these themes overlap, if you recall, our core competencies that we discussed last school year in alignment with our work. So there was a direct overlap in terms of that work. Next slide, please. So this slide highlights themes under two questions that we raised for our participants. One question being, what do we, MCPS, need to be doing differently to bring about improved results? And the second question, what do we want to be different for our district and schools five years from now? And so there were nine themes that emerged across these two questions. And I'll highlight only a few of these for you this evening. The first theme I will highlight is accountability, data, and evaluation. Of course, you know why I did that. So I couldn't resist starting with that one. And what we heard is that using data to inform decision-making and the importance of collecting feedback to improve practices and processes is what a number of the participants highlighted. Equity and inclusion was another theme where we heard how we need to ensure equitable treatment and inclusion of all student groups, and the need for systemic change to address inequities to improve educational outcomes for all students. Professional development and training was another theme that focused on not only improving professional development and training for staff, but also ensuring that the opportunities align with current standards to meet the needs of the diverse students we serve. And then the last theme I will highlight here is school climate and safety, where participants highlighted the importance of prioritizing the needs and experiences of students to ensure that strategies and supports identified are effective and benefiting them. Next slide, please. For this slide, we asked participants, "What are the greatest challenges or issues this school district has to address over the next five years to provide a quality education for all students?" The theme of equity and inclusion challenges was related to systemic inequities faced by students and staff, especially those from marginalized racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic backgrounds. The workforce and leadership representation theme highlighted challenges related to the under-representation of people of color, especially Black or Latino students and administrators, staff, teachers, I'm sorry, and administrators. The theme of student achievement, opportunity gaps, and support needed is where participants mentioned persistent academic achievement and opportunity gaps between Black, Latino, and white students, and the lack of sufficient support systems to address these disparities. The professional development and teacher support theme is where the need for continuous professional development, particularly in areas like cultural competency, anti-racism, and supporting diverse learners, as well as the need for improved teacher collaboration and work conditions, was identified. And the last theme of community and family engagement is where the need to improve engagement with parents and caregivers, especially in communities where family involvement is low, was discussed. Next slide, please. And so to conclude our presentation, just a brief reminder that we will work through the phases that you heard Ms. Wolf shared to develop the next iteration of the strategic plan for completion by July 2025. We are intentional to ensure that the development of the strategic plan is transparent to you and the community using the processes identified on the screen. I'll now hand it back over to Ms. Sylvester for facilitation of a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll ask my fellow board members to turn their lights on if they have any questions. Ms. Sharon, could you give us an example of a root cause analysis that you are looking at now as a result of this planning process?
So root cause analysis is a process that you do in order to take a look at information and then drill into the why. So what we're doing in order to do the root cause analysis is we've actually, we have a work session scheduled on November 11th, is when our work session is scheduled. We have about 130 participants for this work session that are made up of a variety of different stakeholders. And what they will be doing is they will be examining, so if you go back to Slide 11 real quick, and you take a look at the greatest challenges, they are going to be grouped into seven different groups, okay? So let's say, one of our groups is, we just talked a lot about EMLs. Bring it up again, EMLs. They are going, these groups are going to be provided a variety of data on our current state and best practices of what is best for these particular students. They're then going to go through the process where they are going to engage, and what we call it is the systems iceberg process, where you take a look at what are the issues? What are the patterns that we're seeing? And then why do they exist? And they're going to use the data to determine why are these things happening? And then what are some suggestions that we have onto how to remedy these things and identify some suggested goals to that process as well?
So you will go through that process for each of the greatest challenges?
Correct. And actually, the reason that there's seven, like, so for student achievement and opportunity gaps and support needs, they're actually divided up into multiple groups. We have special ed. We have our achievement of our Black students, our achievement of our Hispanic students, and our achievement of our EML learners.
Great, thank you. Okay. I don't see any lights on. Ms. Yang?
Just one question. The, what needs to be different? Is that from the face, from the initial engagement?
Yes.
How many people were in that engagement?
Over 200.
Over 200 of the people. So my question will be then, are we confined to? So my question will be then, are we confined to these nine? And you are just saying, this is the thing that was...
So when you think about our strategic planning process, you want to think of it in a reverse funnel, okay? We started off with broad engagement to try to see where we need to go, and then we're going to be narrowing as we go through the process. But it doesn't mean that these are the only things that we're going to look at as far as what needs to be different. However, if you look at these, these are the, even outside of just the engagement that we did through the strategic planning process, this is the feedback that we get consistently in a lot of our different reports, from our linguistics report to our anti-racist audit. But that will help drive the planning in Phase Two.
Okay. One of the things I don't see here, and I'm wondering, we see technology being used now in our school.
Yes.
And it's a very heavy portion of our whole operation. And I'm wondering if that is an area worth looking at and discussed.
So that is actually part of our Phase Two process. One of the things that we're creating in our Phase Two process is a variety of research briefs for the participants in all of these groups. And one of the things that we are also putting together is the changes in instructional technology and the use and best practices around what instructional technology should look like to leverage student learning and maximize that. So we are going to be talking about that as part of the process.
Okay, thank you.
So you want to be done by June of 2025?
June, yes.
Can you paint a picture for what that final product will look like?
It will be a full strategic plan, so similar...
I'm familiar with the last one, yeah.
Yes. So it will be a full strategic plan, and the goal is, is that the board will approve the full strategic plan. And, you know, we're running parallel tracks right now, as the superintendent, I'm sure, you know, has articulated, that we're on the track of building the strategic plan, and then we're going to be, we're building the budget, this budget, future budgets, as well as how everything else is going to operate from this North Star. So everything that we're going to be doing is going to be side-by-side and aligned with this. So the idea for this strategic plan is while this will provide our district's focus and priorities in a high level, as well as a way, how we are going to be measuring ourselves and holding ourselves accountable, the purpose of this strategic plan is to trickle all the way down into the schools. So everything that the schools are doing should be aligned with exactly with what is in our strategic plan.
Thank you for that.
So one more to follow up on that question. I know in the past, the board has expressed that even for the strategic plan, we need to be have, we need to have an accountability measure of how...
Correct.
...are we doing, so that will be...
That will be all part of our strategic plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation, Ms. Wolf. Any final comments?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to our next agenda item, item number nine, which is, can I get a motion to move line one and two in block?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous with those present. Board members, item 9.3, do we have any new business items to bring forward? Okay, see a nun. Item 10 is for informational purposes only, and item 11, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, raise your hands. And that's unanimous with those present. We are now adjourned.